Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee Meeting of Thursday, June 13th, 2013. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes regular session minutes of 5:23:13, governance minutes of 6:03:13, acceptance of warrants 49V13, 48P13, and 50P13.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Any questions? Fall in favor?
You need a second.
She did.
Okay. Rob made the motion. You want a second?
Oh, you made the motion?
You want a second?
But I moved it. I can second it, too?
No, no. Rob Dincene moved it.
I'll second. Oh, okay. Any questions? Sorry. No.
It's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along to our student representative. Thank you, Ryan, for coming.
Yep.
Before we get to you, I just want to acknowledge Cole. Cole, can you come up? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Paul.
We appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, I know.
You know, how do we look from that angle? Intimidating?
No, no, not at all. Although, it's like, it's different. It's a little more official this way.
Well, congratulations on graduating.
Thank you.
It was a great ceremony.
Yeah. It was good. It was, it went very smoothly, very quickly, too. It wasn't like a three-hour one that I heard, like, Penn Tucket had, or...
No, it was perfect. It was perfect. Everything went great. But we do want to just thank you for everything that you did the whole year. You were a breath of fresh air. I really enjoyed everything that you told us, and you just are so enthusiastic about everything. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We all do.
Yes, absolutely.
So, of course, we want to give you your name tag. You'll hang it up in your college dorm.
That sounds nice.
And then, of course, we have an award of recognition just for you being here for the whole year with us.
Thank you.
You know, you're gonna be very hard to replace.
Yes, definitely.
We really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate everything. Like, you got, like, coming here, I didn't really know what to expect. And then, I learned so much about, like, how the school works. Like, I never would've learned any of the stuff that I did, like, sitting here and listening to everything. And this is something I definitely, like, way, way in the future look forward to doing.
When you get old like us. It would be a fortunate district to have you.
Exactly. That's great. So where are you going to school?
I'm going to UMass Amherst.
Okay, so you will leave in, like, August?
Yeah. I'm leaving August 30th, a little later than a lot of other places, but, yeah.
We wish you the very best.
Congratulations. That sounds very exciting.
Have you decided what you're gonna be studying?
Yeah, I'm gonna be studying biology, and I'm gonna go pre-med with it.
Good luck.
Good for you. Great job, Cole. Good for you. No doubt it. It is a great school. You're gonna be out in my neck of the woods, 20 minutes from my home.
Oh, really?
Yep. That's, I live in Western Mass.
Oh, okay.
I went to UMass Amherst.
Oh, really?
I went to UMass Amherst.
Really? My mom did, too.
Good choice. That is, that's great.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
They're very lucky to have you. Yes, they are.
And Cole, Cole's gonna, remember we talked about we're gonna do a little TV show? So, we're working on that. We're gonna do that next week.
Oh, good.
Next week. We're pretty excited about that.
Yeah, I'm really excited.
We don't know how it work. We're gonna work together, right, Cole?
That's great.
We're gonna work together.
I also wanted to thank you guys for choosing me for the Baker Adams Citizen Scholar. It was, it really touched me that you guys recognized me as someone who really exemplifies everything that, you know, Baker Adams represented, and that you wanted in a student. And I really, really appreciate that, so thank you.
Yeah, well, you earned that. That was, that was definitely stood out.
Definitely, definitely. For sure.
All the contribution you make to the school community is really very, very significant.
There's very little that you didn't get involved in on some level.
That's great. Yes, well, you know, that's what high school should be about, is exploratory options for the future.
Right.
And we did review those applications anonymously, so we didn't know whose application we were researching.
Well, that's true.
I'm glad I stood out, even without my name.
Yes, you did.
To you guys. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well deserved. All right, so we'll present that to Cole. Are you gonna go over there, or? Let you approach by? All right, all right. Thank you, Cole. Thank you. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. How about that?
Unless you want to.
Unless you want to.
Thank you, Cole. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Be in touch.
I'll see you running on the streets.
I already have a couple of talks.
Running on the streets.
That's great.
Okay. So poor Ryan now has to follow.
That's all right.
Okay, so what do you have for us, Ryan? Thank you for coming.
Yeah, no problem.
I appreciate it. You're 11th grade.
Yeah, I'm a junior, so I'll be a senior next year.
Okay.
Hopefully fill in his footsteps, who knows?
Oh, that'd be great.
All right, so, well, the past few weeks, obviously, things have been kinda winding down at Georgetown High School. And we finished school next one, not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, so we're kinda just, like, counting down the days until we have finals, and then we're finally out of school. So, what the things that have been going on, well, for, in terms of sports, we had our baseball team make it to the playoffs for Division Four, but unfortunately, they lost their playoff game last week. And that, well, that was kinda sad, because a lot of them were hoping for a really good season.
A repeat, yeah.
The seniors were wanting a great end to their career, but they couldn't have that. And we had a similar story with the softball team, but we're just thankful that they made it as far as they did. And it's just been crazy with the seniors, and like, we had senior awards last week, and we had graduation, and they kinda just, like, left their mark on the school. And it was so funny, 'cause the last day, right before their last final, they kinda were just, like, running through the halls, they're kinda like screaming, just like pounding on the lockers, just like showing their enthusiasm, and like, how happy they were to be done with school. And like, in the parking lot that, that morning, they're like blasting music, like, having their own party, so it, it, it's nice, like, and now, we're, all the juniors and everyone in the high school, like, feels like they're one year older, so it's kinda crazy, like, 'cause we're like filling in, we're, we're just like, we feel like a year older, but we still feel like the age we are now, so kinda like, our feelings are a little all over the place. And then, this morning, we had the undergraduate awards, I mean, not the undergraduate, the underclassmen awards breakfast, so kinda just recognize the achievements in various aspects, like athletic, community service, and academic among all of the underclassmen in the community. And that was great to just, like, celebrate everyone and what they've done this past year. And then, tonight, there's a basic acting showcase going on, as, as you saw, yeah, like, Ms. Donovan, she started teaching at Georgetown. She, she's really young. She's in her twenties, and she graduated just from Georgetown in 2004.
Right.
But it was wonderful that, yeah, and she came back three years ago, and it was awesome that she came back, because she's brought so much to the community. She has been so fortunate. She's like really good with theater, and that's kind of her thing, so she's been educating the students at Georgetown with that, and she kinda created her own course. She created basic acting at the high school past few years. And this ye, next year, actually, she created another course called intermediate acting, which is awesome, because it shows of, like, the arts and just, like, celebrating that aspect of high school life is, like, still continuing, and we're having, like, the basic acting showcase is just, like, the culmination of everything the basic acting class or classes have done throughout the semester, and then they just put on a performance to the community. So, it's pretty much what's been going on with the high school.
Ryan will tell you this, but Ryan did really well this morning, particularly in the AP categories. I think you were probably the AP winner in every one of the categories.
Yeah.
You know, he's, and are you, you're near the top of the class, too. Are you number one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Good for you.
Hopefully, it stays that way.
So, he's, he's a great representative of, again, what the, what the school has to offer, and guys like him take advantage of everything they can.
Thank you.
And offer to come to the school committee meeting.
Yeah, of course.
Right? Of course. That's amazing.
We gotta have a student rep, so. Don't wanna just leave the seat empty, so...
That's very important.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Ryan.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Congratulations on your success this year as well.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations. All right. Okay, is there anyone from the audience that would like to come forward?
Come on up. Derek?
Oh, wait.
Yeah.
Okay.
Derek, do you mind?
Do you see right up here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
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 My name is Teresa DeFranzo. Children are Jackie and Timmy Chianca.
Yep.
I like to confuse everybody with the names. Okay, so I am before you tonight. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to talk about next year's school calendar, and I apologize that I didn't do it when, I didn't know when you guys were talking about it, and I apologize for that, so that we didn't have to revisit it. But I noticed that, so we have off that whole week that Christmas is, and then the following week, January 1st is a Wednesday, and then I noticed that the Tuesday, the Thursday and the Friday, the second and the third, we're still not going back to school.
Right.
And my concern with that is, particularly this year, with the way the weather was, and we did have the five built-in days, that my concern is, the later we go in the year, and I mean no disrespect, we don't do as much at the very end. We're jumping on lockers, right? Right? This is, this is fine, this is good, but I'm thinking, shouldn't we try to get in as many days as we can before MCAS, before, you know, some of these bigger testing things that come up, if we were to have another winter like last year, where we could take those two days and still be going to school, as opposed to just tacking them on at the end and possibly going to school till June 30th? Where I think we can all agree, we're very lucky this year, it's not super hot. If it's super hot, I just think we lose the attention of the students. The Pembroke is like, I can't even begin to believe how hot that building gets for the kids to be in. And I just don't think we get, we accomplish as much late June as we would in January. So I was wondering if there was any way that the school committee could, is it too late to revisit the calendar for next year, to consider going to school those two days? So on the off chance, like I said, we have five days of, five or more snow days, we're not going to school till June 30th, when I will honestly say, if it were 90 degrees, I'd be picking my kids up at 11:00, and we'd be going to Salisbury.
I love your honesty.
I'm being honest.
I do, I love that.
It's like, June 27th.
Yep.
I know grades are probably closed, and you don't need to watch a movie in school, which is sometimes what happens when it gets super hot at the end of the year.
Right. Well, what we can do is, we can ask the committee if they would like to reconsider taking, you know, revisiting it at this time.
Is the other individual who wanted to speak the same subject?
No.
I don't, yeah, I think...
Yeah, I think Teresa's the one who asked to come.
I mean, is this something that the committee would like to revisit and, you know, take another vote, or...
I mean, I, although I'm, I'm very sympathetic with wanting to end the school year as early as possible, and I think, you know, when we put together the calendar, a lot of people have differing ideas, and the one thing they, everyone tends to agree on is that you wanna end it as early as you can in June. However, you know, we've already set the calendar, and I just, and I'm not quite sure about the educational value of just two days, too. That's not as great as, you know, I, you know, I'm concerned that people may have already made plans, I don't know, what...
I think, my sense is, we've had this discussion, and we deliberated this issue, so it's not as if we didn't take into consideration your very concerns. There were other issues that we were deliberating in conjunction. We would have to now dig through our memory banks and to, to look at what we did. So, so, but it does, my recollection is that we, we took all of these factors into consideration and didn't overlook your point.
So, can I ask why you did decide to keep...
I mean, everybody goes back to work January 2nd, back to school, like, parents work, so now it's two more days of trying to find coverage if you have younger kids. So, why, why was the decision made to not start on January 2nd, like most things will be?
Well, I, I can just say to you that I had a concern when I saw the calendar in the beginning. I was thinking the same thing. I'm like, wow, two weeks, that's a lot. The kids will be out, and I'm wondering how they will then jump back into it. And I know I voiced that concern that evening. I took into consideration what the administrators were, how they were feeling about it, and the fact that it's only gonna really be this year that this will be such a, a big deal, because next year, it would be, you know, it would be one, one day later, so, you know, opening up, you wouldn't come back on Friday. So, we were thinking that this was kind of a unique...
Yeah, it's a unique year, and there's also the issues with professional development that are, we had, we had some unusual circumstances in the coming school year that are not typical of a school year, so, and one of them is the, the need for the additional professional development, the half-days that we have. So, so, we, we weighed all of that in our decision. I can't tell you why, my memory just doesn't serve me that well, why we came to the decision, but, but I can tell you that it was not very, we, we didn't just arbitrarily say, that we, we took all of these things into consideration, and that they were, you know, we went back and forth, and we deliberated this calendar, and I think we've talked about it at least two meetings, if not more.
Okay.
So it's not as though we didn't, it was on the agenda, we talked about it, and we didn't, it wasn't just somebody came in and said, "I want two weeks at this time." It seemed to be what worked best, given all of the other conditions, all the other circumstances that we were considering at that moment.
Okay. And our hope is that we get it out, you know, as soon as possible to the parents, you know, for situations like that, for childcare and things like that.
Right, right. And people might be arranging to go places or to do things or something like that.
I wanna be one of those people. I'm not one of those people, but I wanna be one of them.
Personally, one of those people where I'm in favor of starting before...
Labor Day.
Labor Day, but not in this calendar year, because of the way the days fall.
Giving people an entire year to know that it would be happening.
But, you know, if the days fall right, I would be in favor of that, just to, I, I agree to try to get out as early as possible, but with everything, I mean, there are many pieces to the puzzle, and with everything we consider, this is, appeared to be the best solution to us.
I do think it's gonna be a unique situation this particular school year.
Okay.
And that it'll be back on track, and it won't feel like such a long break for the kids, if that's any consolation.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Would you typically do, go over the calendar, just so?
Well, my, I think we did it in March. Generally, we do it in March.
Okay.
But we, if we're thinking of starting bef, we, we usually make the decision about before or after Labor Day, earlier than that, because we do have an arrangement with the union that if we're going to try to change that, that we'd let them know around the 1st of January.
Okay.
So, that, we, we made it actually in two parts, if I remember. We did the first and last day of school.
First.
First, and then a month or so later, we went and did all of the PD days and the holidays and all of that. And that was a, there were two meetings in March. I think you adopted it in, in either the last March meeting or the beginning of April.
Yeah, I think, I think March stands out for me.
Okay.
And I do wanna say thank you for showing up to talk about this, because I do remember part of the conversation is, we're making a decision for the town without any input from the town, and how hard that is.
No, and that's why I apologize for not knowing when you were talking about it before, so that's why next year I would know.
Right.
Come to that meeting in March, or whatever.
Right.
Love to have you.
I will remember that you were here with that concern. I, I can guarantee you that, and that will become part of the conversation when we do this again. But any, you know, anybody that has concerns about things like this, it just helps so much if they show up, and anything we can do to get that information out to people who'd be interested, so that they do know, I'm, I'm so pleased you found, even found the calendar for next year and are here to comment on it, because that really helps us to do our job better.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Can I leave, like, Cole?
Yes.
Stay.
Stay for the whole meeting.
Come on and stay. Okay, we have another audience member from the public, from our audience.
Derek Jones.
Is your little, is your, is your little, you wanna come up, Julia? You come up with Dad if you want?
I didn't bring her on purpose. She just happened to be with me tonight, 'cause Mom and the other one had to go karate.
Oh, that can happen.
Come on.
She came up the stairwell, and she's like, "I remember coming up here."
Yeah.
Eight years ago.
Eight years ago. Welcome.
Thank you. For, for those who don't know me, I'm Derek Jones. This is my daughter, Julia. I'm here basically just to add, and I'll be as quick as I can, I'm just here to basically ask permission to provide the staff at the schools with the solicitation document, asking for donations to the Pan-Mass Challenge Bike Ride, which is a bike-athon I do every year. This year will be my seventh year consecutively, and this one here is the one who inspired me to do it to begin with. She was diagnosed with neuroblastoma at six months, cured on her, she was deemed cured on her fourth birthday, day before her fourth birthday, so I feel like this is the least I could do to give back, is to be part of that bike-athon and help raise funds for cancer patients. And it's basically, the Pan-Mass Challenge is an organization that puts on a bike-athon every year since 1980, and 100% of the donations go directly to the Dana Farber Cancer Institute and the Jimmy Fund. And that's basically it. I have the solicitation document here, if you wanna see it.
Yeah, I think we put a copy in.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, great.
Now, how far do you go?
I, there's nine routes. I do the, it's a two-day, I do the two-day route. The longest route is 190 miles. I was doing that up until last year, 'cause the routes are different, and the cities are different. Two years ago, ended up being a nightmare, trying to leave Provincetown in the pouring rain and the traffic. It took us like four and a half hours to get back up this way. So I do a different route, but it's like 168 miles. It's the second longest route, so, yeah, it's, it's, but it's the least I could do to give back, so...
That's wonderful. And you have done this in the past, you've solicited in the past?
I, I have, yes. When I was School Resource Officer, I did once, came before the board and asked permission, and, yeah, I, it's my seventh year doing it. And every year, for the past five years, I've been writing in honor of a current pediatric cancer patient, and this is my third year in a row, writing in honor of a Georgetown resident, McKinley Rose Nicholas. She just turned four recently, so Team Mickey is the name of the, the team, so...
That's great. That's great. And I've seen her around a lot.
Yes, yes.
So that's good news.
Yes, she's doing very well.
That's great. Glad to hear that.
I feel like it's, it's working.
Yeah, no, that's great. I think what you do is, is amazing, just to, I mean, that's a lot on your body to, to do that, a lot of, you know, training and everything else that goes into it, but it is for a great cause.
You're absolutely right.
We appreciate you doing that, because I'm sure we can, I, I think all of us have been touched, probably by cancer, unfortunately.
Yeah.
You know, and it is the donations that help. Does anyone have any questions for him?
Easy.
All right.
That's terrific.
Good luck. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, then I just want to, the Chair will make, do you mind if I make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. You usually write it down for me.
I did, right here.
To prove the distribution. You're there. Okay. The Chair will make a motion to approve distribution of the Pan-Mass Challenge flyer as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Any questions? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Derek. Nice to see you again, Julia.
I just thought of one, one more question.
Yes.
If somebody wants to contribute, and they don't get this flyer, how can they do that?
Well, actually, I've been in touch with the Georgetown Record, and he's gonna give back to me next week, and it'll be an article in the paper, too.
Okay.
Great.
That's great.
Good luck. Wonderful. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move along to the superintendent's report.
The spring sports summary.
Oh, spring sports. Chris is here.
Christopher Franco wants to be able to leave with the others.
Hi, Chris. Hi, Chris.
All right, Kristen. Good evening.
Oh, I see him now.
There we go.
Okay. So... Thank you for this. This was great. You like summarized it perfectly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we had a very successful spring, whether you measure it by state tournament bids, which three out of our four teams had participation numbers. We had 171 students participating in athletics in the spring, a lot of individual awards, multiple all-league players. We had a Player of the Year in baseball, which is basically the league MVP in Tom Pingree. Ryan Bahar actually made All-States in track and field with our Ipswich co-op, which, as which as we know is going away, but we actually have a lead, a strong lead on another school.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful.
It's just a matter of getting approved by the state, so I can't really say who it is yet, but I'm hoping.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah. So, yeah, we had a lot of individual success and team success. The kids were really enthusiastic. At the end of the year, I didn't put this in the report, but I will let you guys know. We're going to do another banner ceremony. We did that last year. And basically, any championship that was won during the season, we raised. This year, we have three cheerleading, won the Division Four North title. And then our Ipswich Georgetown grandfathered co-op kids. The, in the indoor track season, the boys won the Cape Ann League and the girls won the Cape Ann League. And we're also putting up a special, or we're adding to our basketball banner, the Thousand Point Club. Kristin Hogan is going to be entering, so she'll be hoisting that one up, so.
Wow, that's good. Do you know when that's going to be?
So it's the last day of school, June 26th, at 10:40 a.m. So the last 20 minutes of school will be a little pep rally, so. It's a tradition we started last year, and I think the kids liked it, and for sure, we'll do it again.
I wonder if the seniors will come back for it?
I hope so. I, I really hope Kristen comes back.
They're on the teams. I bet they will.
Some did last year.
Yeah, they did.
Yep.
They did some good photo ops, and they get to take a picture with their banner, so it's kind of neat.
That's great.
Yeah. Some of our concerns, you can see softball numbers are pretty low. That's been consistent for the last probably three or four years. We're always teetering on that, can we run a JV team or not? And I know once the JV team goes away, eventually the program's going to fall apart.
Yeah, that's true.
We don't want that to happen, so we really, you know, we're looking for creative ways to get more kids playing softball at a younger age. The coach is going to offer some clinics to the youth in the summer and, you know, early spring, so we might be able to get some enthusiasm behind the sport. Because it's a fun sport to watch. If you saw any of their games this year, they were really, really intense and they played the game really well, so I'd hate to see that program go. So, field space was a little difficult. It's going to get more difficult next year, as we know, with the turf field coming in. We have some plans in place temporarily. We're going to have to move our JV baseball team because they're not going to have a field to practice or play on. But we've got some ideas, and those will continue to come to fruition, I'm sure. We definitely, at the end of the year, as Joan knows, we had trouble, you know, with our budget. Our numbers actually weren't horrible, but we still have money that's owed. And, yeah, from user fees. So we offer installment plans, and oftentimes the first installment comes in, and then the second and third don't, and we have to chase people down. So we need to really tighten that up, whether it's if you miss payments, you can't do it again.
Can't play practice or play.
But you can't do the installment plan either again, so I think that's going to be important.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, when we first talked about that, I mean, that what the conditions were that the timeline was pretty tight from payment one, two, and three. So you didn't get to the end of the season and still owe money. You know, if you, if you owed money, then it was kind of like, until you pay, you can't play. And the purpose of that was to really help people budget for it, you know, so you didn't have to come up with the whole user fee in one, you know, one fell swoop.
So what is, it's three installments?
Yes.
It's broken into three?
Right.
And sometimes, if someone has a hardship, we can spread it out even more. We've done six installments for some people, and, you know.
But.
But if people don't pay and take advantage of the system, it really hurts us.
We are looking into, and I've discussed it with Margaret a little bit, to adding online payments for any of our fees. And so sometimes if people have access to their credit card, you know, they don't have to come up with the cash, and they can pay their credit card over a longer period of time than they can the two or three.
That's a great idea.
Yes, that's a great idea. We'll work together, you know, with, with the bank that we currently use for the, the, I think it's the middle high school is on the, the food services can pay for their lunches that way, so we're looking into that.
I've been looking for that for a long time, yes.
The only thing, the only concern that I have with the food service, if you're looking at the same, is, and I, I didn't look at it this year, but I know last year they only took MasterCard.
Oh, really?
Which I thought was odd. They didn't take Visa.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that we clarify that before we sign with anybody.
Yeah, they only took MasterCard.
You need to be as flexible as possible.
And honestly, Chris, I didn't know that that was such an issue, but sometimes putting, putting it into our office, rather than your office.
Yeah, Joanne does a great job, Joanne Sherman.
Right, but sometimes taking it out of the athletic office and putting it in the business office makes it a little bit more real for a parent to get a phone call, so.
Well, and she's a parent, and it must be difficult for her.
It is, it is hard because, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to say to the, to the child, you can't play, but sometimes that's what makes the difference, right?
Well, the food services people don't have a problem saying, you owe $15, go home and get, you know. We should have them clawing them. I don't know.
Well, you know, I, I see it both ways. I, I do understand it, but, you know, it's, it's just, you know, sometimes people take advantage sometimes of, you know, you're not, I know you're going to let my kid play, and then you're going to have to chase us. We used to have the same problem in preschool, you know, where we'd have people who owed quite a bit of money, and yet the child still stayed. And then the following year, you know, we'd have to say, you can't re-enroll, you know, until you, but sometimes it just gets to the point where it's just too much. And then the parent digs a hole and they, they can't get themselves out of it. So I, I think, you know, we do them a favor sometimes if we say, you know, this is only as far as we're willing to let you go.
Yes, indeed.
So I think when we do our fall signups, that's something we're just going to put in writing that if you're on the installment plan, if, if it's not paid by the 15th of the month, they don't play. And the coaches have to be on board with it too, which, it's tough for the tail coach too. Your kid can't play because the parent.
I know, I, I know, and yet punishing the child sometimes. But, you know, kids at the high school level can do some things to help themselves out. I'd be saying to my son, you know, you need to help contribute, you know, if it's a har, if it's that much of a hardship.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, then, you know, and with all the fundraisers that, that go on, you know, sometimes you can do fundraisers where a certain percentage of, of the funds can, can go, you know, like, you sell a box of chocolate, and you, you sell, 50% of it goes to the company and 50% of it goes toward your user fee. I mean, maybe there are some creative things we can think of, because I do think that the children, if it's a hardship for the family, the children, you know, should have some, you know, interest in helping out if it's important enough.
Along those lines, for the spring, we had seven free and three reduced lunches. And our family cap, we always examine that at the end of the year. It's usually the spring when families start to hit the $1,500 cap. There were five athletes, so $1,230 in revenue was saved by those families by hitting the cap, so. Fall sports, we're going to be starting up on, our signup night's going to be Wednesday, August 7th, 6 o'clock to meet with coaches. And 6:30 will be the signups. And then the actual tryouts for football, it's going to be a August 19th, which is a Monday. They're double sessions. Cheerleading will start that day as well. And then all other sports will start on August 22nd, the Thursday. And I think, I was looking at the schedule, I believe soccer's actually opening up their season before school starts, which is.
Oh, really?
August 21st, is it?
Well, their actual first game is before the first day of school.
Oh, okay.
Wow.
It's funny just the way that it all works. Yeah, we're looking forward to a great fall season. I've talked to all the fall coaches, and they're all pretty much lined up, and we're excited.
Chris, is there any thought to seeing if you could switch the Thanksgiving, you know, so next year have it be away again, and then the following year is the year the turf field's going to be there, then have it be home?
It's tough, yeah.
Because that, that, it just would be nice to have the, like, the first year that the turf is available to have the game be on turf. And it's such, it, you know, it's so hard at Thanksgiving that the field is usually a disaster, and.
I think what would be more, I know the.
I don't know if it's possible, but.
I've talked to the Manchester A.D. about that. She's actually on vacation that week because basically she planned, I don't have to be here this week.
I see.
However, we might be able to flip-flop the next year, you know, and basically trade, you know.
Do two.
Yeah, two in a row in Manchester after. That might be a, a strong possibility.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be nice to have it on the new field.
Yeah, yeah, and I think the Manchester people would be very happy to come and play on the turf field because I, every year that we have it here, they comment, you know, the people in the stands comment on just like the quality of the, of the condition of the field. And it's not because we haven't put the effort into trying to make it the best it can be. It's just not, it's just not in good shape usually by Thanksgiving after we've played on it through the season.
Okay, okay. It looks great. Thanks to get it put together.
Thank you, Chris.
Have a good summer.
You as well.
Okay, now we're going to move along to the superintendent's report.
Right, and so, I mean, I would just be, be very quick. I, I wrote for your benefit the information about the senior activities. You know, I don't think I need to, you know, go into detail about those unless you have any particular questions about them. But again, every year, it's my pleasure to be part of, you know, attending and get invited by the kids and to attend, you know, the, the range of things. There's some very, very nice traditions in Georgetown. And because it's a small school, it, it's a very, you know, family-oriented feeling. And, you know, just, it's just really, it's just a great, every year, every year. So just wanted you to know about the, the senior activities, especially since many of you don't have children at that age yet. So it's nice to, to know what, what's coming up. And then I think the majority of the time that tonight I'd like to have you spend is with the schools regarding the school and department reports. So that's why I'm keeping my comments tonight to be very brief and just defer, I guess, to move on to the school reports.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move along to Principal's Tanner and Mar for their, the elementary handbook and the improvement plans.
Now, there was something on your table. What, what is that, Pierre? Okay, is that an edition?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening, Margaret.
And Donna.
Dr. Tanner and I take turns every other year updating the handbook. This year, it's my turn, so I'm going to be reporting the changes. And this year, the changes are really just updates, nothing major. So starting with the cover and the letter on page four, I would just like to update the dates to reflect that it will be for the 2013, 2014 school year. On, I would like to add a page five to add your names and the superintendent's name. I noticed that we don't have anywhere listed Superintendent Carol Jacobs. And also, I think it would be nice to have school committee members listed as well, so I'm requesting to add that. On page 13, under safety and security, we would like to add activities inside and outside the school are monitored at all times by video surveillance. We have that sign outside of both of our schools, and I think it's important that people know when they come in, they are going to be videotaped, videoed, or recorded. Mr. Belanger always corrects this. It's not video. On page 15, we're going to change lunch program to breakfast and lunch program because we do offer breakfast at Pearlie at our, at our extended day program, and also just anybody can get breakfast. And we've been talking about really trying to push that and expand breakfast, so we want to make sure that parents know that breakfast is available. On page 15. Do you have breakfast at Penbrook?
We do.
Okay, so, sorry. We have it as a part of our extended day also, so I think maybe some of the children that are from Penbrook, they might eat breakfast early and then head over to Penbrook. And then we both also then have breakfast for children that come but are not part of extended day. Okay. Then on page 15, add Pearlie to the list of schools offering breakfast. So it will say breakfast, Pearlie, Penbrook, and Middle High School. And then on page 28, and this is what was on the table when you came in, that under the dress code, there were some redundancies in the paragraphs, and I think just maybe over the years of updating, and when we send this out for printing, maybe it just, they just doubled or something. So we're just cleaning up the language and making sure that it's, it's clear. That's it. Thank you for going over those.
The only, the only question that I have is on the safety and security section. Are there any legal issues with making a policy, and I, and I, I don't know, it's, it's, are there any legal issues with making a policy in writing that the area is going to be completely covered by video? Whether it is completely covered or not completely covered, that can set up down the line if something were to happen, problems. The fact that it's put in writing that we are doing it completely, I guess the question is, are we covering it?
Well, what?
Maybe I misunderstood.
Could you tell me again? I've now got it in my.
On page 13.
Yes, but what, what's the, what's the language that Rob's questioning?
The language is activities inside and outside the school are monitored at all times by video surveillance.
Okay, and you're wondering.
I was just wondering if, I was, I was just wondering if there were any legal issues associated with the fact.
Like whether or not you can do it?
Not that you can do it, but the fact that you have said and put in writing that you are doing it, that in fact, if something happens and you don't do it.
Well, my understanding, Rob, if I can just say, I think it's actually the opposite. I think that if you are recording, you have to tell people that you are.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's the, we just want people to know that when you come into the school, you are going to be recorded.
And I, and I, and, and I get that part. I'm just thinking of the part of, of, of someone thinking that, okay, the school is covered, so I'm safe.
Right, you're thinking if there's an activity that happens and we don't act on it because it's been recorded.
Because we don't catch it.
Right.
That we have said we are monitoring it all, and, and by putting it in writing.
Well, you know what? I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think that when we talked to Naomi about this earlier, she, she said if you, if you have surveillance, you should notify people you have surveillance. Now, the, the scenario you're talking about is not one we discussed.
And I just thought of it. I'm sorry for not bringing it up sooner.
No, that's all right. So I think maybe what, I probably wouldn't call her about this particular issue, but I, if I have a call into her, another point if you want, I'd be more than happy to ask that question.
Sure.
So the question, so it's more of an issue of if people then get sort of this sense of security, and then if, for, maybe the camera's broken or some, it's not, it's not on, and something happens, and then there's no ability to verify that something happened. Would, because we said we had it, would that be a problem for us? Okay, I can ask that question. I think Margaret's right. I think more what we were looking at is, you know, if you, if you see something and then you call somebody's attention to it, and then they say, you didn't tell us that we were being videoed, that that was more the liability we were wondering about. Okay, I, I'll put that down as something to look into.
What time does breakfast start?
That's a good idea too. Is it in there?
For the program or for the kids that aren't in the book?
I don't think it is in there. Program, I mean, and before.
I believe it starts at 8:15.
It's 8:15. That's when breakfast is first available.
I think it might end at 8:15.
Because I remember.
That's when the little ones say, and I got to get in there because at 8:15, it's all, I think it.
Because then the kids go outside at 8:20.
Yeah, well, kids aren't supposed to be dropped off before eight, so the soonest it would start would be eight.
But.
But it's not, doesn't seem like it's open all the time. But some kids do eat breakfast and, because they're in there eating when the kids are outside playing. I know that. It's not many kids, but they do.
Yeah, I don't think it's many.
I think it's probably when the kitchen person gets in and.
But if you want more kids to eat breakfast, they need to be clear on what time they can go.
We can add breakfast.
And I have heard it's a good breakfast.
Cinnamon toast, Tim.
We're going to add some new offerings in the fall.
We would prefer that there be additional offerings.
We spoke, Margaret and I met today with the food service director, and there'll be new offerings in the fall, and they'll be publicized.
Oh, great, yes. Oh, good.
Very good. Very good. All right, great. Okay, I'm going to make a motion at the end, like I did last time, if that's okay with everybody. To approve. Is that okay?
To approve what, Bobby? I'm sorry.
I'll do the, the improvement plan, the Pearlie on the camera.
We should do it individually, I, I would suggest, yeah, because they're two distinctly different agenda items.
Okay.
I think when you did it before, you, the two, the two principals, that, that made sense to cluster them. But in this case, they're really two different things. If you don't mind, probably a separate motion.
Okay, so. We'll make a. Go ahead.
I have a question. I'm, I'm back to the breakfast. I'm trying to imagine this breakfast. Because, I mean, at lunch, obviously, the children are supervised and they go to lunch and class. But thinking about like kindergartners and first graders, so would a parent just drop them off and then they would go by themselves to the breakfast? Or could a parent go and eat breakfast with them?
Well, what happens at the Pearlie, we, we have the two scenarios. If, we'll start with the extended day. So when children come to the extended day, there is a first breakfast, it's like the Hobbit, firsties, at around 7:20. So for the children that come and have the breakfast there in the extended day, and Ms. Ty would give them breakfast. But then if you are just not a part of the extended day, and you just want to come and have, your child would have breakfast, then again, you're, you're dropped off, as you always are, which is always being monitored. And children come into the gym at 8:15, and then at 8:20, somebody comes to get them and takes them into the cafeteria.
Okay.
So we, we kind of congregate them, so if there are, you know, three or four children, they would be together and then go in and eat together. So they're not straggling in. There's a, a time that they're taking it.
Right, so a whole group of them are going in together.
Yes, although it's a very small group at this point, if I don't need to expand. And then when they finish eating, they go right outside with all the other children or back into the gym if it's not good weather.
Okay, all right. I understand. Thank you, thank you. It's, is that?
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the changes to the elementary handbook as presented by Principals Mar and Tanner. Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, ready for, ready for the handbook? Yes. The, um, school improvement plan? Okay, in your, in your packet, I know you received the, the real school improvement plan and then my, my PowerPoint. So I just want to take a minute and just explain the cover. As I've done since I've gotten here, I've used a drawing for the cover. This is first gr, first grade drawing. And the art teacher, every year, in your packet, this would be the cover fan.
I've seen it, yes.
Does, does the drawings. She takes them outside, so they're actually looking at the school. They're observing shapes and the colors, and, and then using a drawing, they replicate. And I don't know whose drawing it is. I go through them and try to find one that will copy well. But all the drawings are on our website, so if you are a parent of a first grader, go into our website and now go into the art corner, and she has them looping, so there's a PowerPoint. And this year, you can go into your child's class and find them. So I just want to make sure to bring that up. Good job, Paul. It is. You're awesome. They're really worth.
What's amazing about this picture, you said first grade?
Yes.
I mean, they actually, in the age of first grade, they've got the proportions relatively fixed. That's, that's impressive.
That's very impressive. Sometimes.
Like the windows, you know?
Yeah, they've, they've kept a relationship between the forms.
When we, when you give children assignments, that is just one thing, draw flower, draw school. Often you think how they're all going to be the same. It's a cookie cutter. And it is amazing how 101 children, there are 101 different drawings. And so it's always fascinating to do that with the same assignment and to have that individuality, so it's great. So I just want to take a minute. I won't, I promise I won't be too long. But I just want to take a minute and review our 2012, 2013 goals, just to see where, where we were before we move on. So goal one was our literacy goal. We had, our goal was to have 80% proficiency at or above on Dibble's assessment, and also reading 80% or above as evidenced by Farnes and Pennell. So some of the things over the past two years that we've done are to create a 90-minute literacy block. We are using Foundation's Phonics program with Fidelity, and we've had professional development in that area. We've refined our literacy instruction with the help of our literacy coach. So refining reading groups and how we form those groups. We have bimonthly data team meetings. We have grade-level meetings also with our literacy tutors looking at data. We are providing interventions for children at the beginning of the year who test below 80%, and then we are constantly monitoring every two weeks, again, looking at that data and forming groups around that data. We are, again, refining our readers' workshop and aligning it to the standards and making sure that we are linking it, again, to the Common Course standards. And we are collabor, we've collaborated with Georgetown Public Library to really focus on the summer reading program. And then last year, we started Atlas Curriculum, which is putting in our curriculum. And again, as a way to make sure we are aligning with the standards and also. And again, um, as a way to make sure we are aligning with the standards, and also that we don't have any holes in our curriculum. Goal two was by the end of the, um, 2012, 2013 school year, students will advance in their writing proficiency. So as you know, across the district, that was a goal among all the schools, to really focus on the writing. So toward that goal, at our monthly meetings, we, um, in addition to looking at data, we looked at student writing at, at every meeting. And there was a study group to focus on conferring, helping children, you know, advance in their writing. We had school-wide celebrations of growth in writing. We had two authors come and, um, as our cultural enrichment. And, um, a curriculum director, Julie DeRoche, started a K-12 English Language Arts Committee to help align the curriculum, and then again, through Atlas Curriculum, um, that aligned our writing. Goal three was, by the end of 2012, 2013, all students will reach grade level, um, in math, as evidenced through everyday math assessments. And toward that goal, we developed a sixty-minute math block. Um, we looked at math unit tests, and also were able to have, um, a math interventionist, provide intervention for children who are not at that eighty percent. We adopted Aspen's Assessment, which I have talked about as being, um, it's not curriculum-related, but just gives a snapshot into a child's numeracy. And just like in DIBELS, it lets us know how quickly children can think about phonics, the ASPNs lets us see how quickly they can think about numbers in math. So again, it's not, not specific to a curriculum, but it's, it gives us our first indication of how much, um, math sense a child has. So we started using that. Again, aligning the curriculum with the Common Core standards. We had several meetings, K-DA five collaboration, so between both schools, um, talking about math and the everyday math. We started to use math exemplars. At Pembroke, they do use math exemplars to, um, again, making sure that children know how to respond to a prompt in math. So we identified exemplars, and then looked at the rubrics, and rewrote them to the standards to making sure that we were, um, again, using the standards as our rubrics, and then Atlas Curriculum. Then goal four was to promote awareness and respect as a framework for intervention and prevention of bullying, and increase students' problem-solving abilities and social skills. We continued offering bully-proofing curriculum. This year, we called it Friendship and not Bully Class. And that is taught by Ellen Bazillion.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We had professional development with Dr. Elizabeth Englander from Bridgewater State University, who is very well-known in her work on bullying, has done research for twenty-five years. So that was good. We have monthly community gatherings, and the way we run our gatherings is like the responsive classroom, classroom. So, um, we replicate in the large what we do in the small. Continue with responsive classroom. We have, um, social skills groups as a way to help some children socialize and, um, learn how to make friends and get along. And then we had also conducted a winter survey, and had a phenomenal fifty-three percent response rate, which was, um, a hundred and thirty-seven responses online, so great results. And then goal five was to increase and improve parent communication and involvement in relationship to topics identified on the school council parent survey. And so I know district-wide, improving the website was one of those goals, and, um, we've done that, obviously, um, on our site. I had written a principal's blog that really started morphing away from a blog, and then I was using, um, the parent reps to send out information through room parents, so that pe- people were getting information right through their email. And I think next year, I'm going to refine that. It was indicated as the way people wanna get information, so we'll do that. We had parent evenings and workshops, um, on, on Foundations. We had a balanced literacy overview, and then a workshop, The Secret to Your Child's Success. Of course, our Parent Information Night at the beginning of the year is also another way to update parents. Then our report cards are revised, standards-based, so that was a way to keep parents informed. And then again, our phenomenal rate on our parent survey. So that was last year. And. So our year-end data, um, in kindergarten, our DIBELS showed ninety-three students were tested. Seventy-nine percent met benchmark, and you can see twenty students were below benchmark. In Founas and Pennell, ninety-three students were tested, and eighty-two percent are reading at or above benchmark, with seventeen were below. In everyday math, ninety-four students were assessed. In kindergarten, the assessments are observation, they're not paper and pencils, so teachers are individually looking at student performance and then tracking their, their assessment that way. Sixty-six, um, are at or above, with thirty-two students below. The ASPNs, and again, this just shows us how quickly children, um, have known numeracy. And ninety-three were tested, sixty-six met the benchmark, with, um, with thirty-two students below. Year-end for grade one, DIBELS, a hundred and one students were tested, seventy-nine percent met, met benchmark. Founas and Pennell, a hundred and one students tested, and ninety-one percent are reading at or above grade level. I just want everyone to sit with that for a minute. And then our, um, our math for grade one, everyday math assessments, hundred students were assessed, eighty-nine were at, at or above grade level. And then in the ASPNs, a hundred tested, and sixty-nine percent met, met benchmark. So when we're looking at, um, where do we go from here? Our first goal for the 2013, 2014 School Improvement Plan, again, is a district goal, and all the schools have this as a goal, so I'm, I won't go through it again. But this is where, by June 2015, we want all teachers and administrators to have completed the five-step evaluation cycle and identify actions within an educator plan to improve professional practice in student learning. Goal two, by June 2015, one hundred percent of educators will identify RTI, and this is, um, the Response to Intervention Tiered Instruction for the lowest achieving twenty percent of students, as measured by district-determined measures. So this is really a two-pronged goal. We can see through the data that some children are not at eighty percent. And in literacy, they, they are, and we're thrilled with the results. It's a little bit below in DIBELS, which again is the automaticity. And math, you can see it's a little bit lower, and sorry, I'll have to have my back to you. But, um, we, now that we have refined our instruction, now we really need to start looking at, why are twenty percent, or in the case of literacy, fewer than twenty percent, not meeting the benchmark? And so there's two parts to that. One is, um, determining the district-determined measures, which will happen again across the district. And that means just identifying what kind of assessments we want to use to get at the information of how children are learning. And then with that information, then it is several steps, and again, in your packet, you have the complete SIP, and this is just a, a brief overview. But we want to look at, um, first of all, identifying what are our tiers? How are we going to provide that intervention? We wanna continue to identify the gaps between, again, um, regular ed and special ed. We are continuing to look at those, we call it the universal instruction. What should happen for every child in the classroom, so that, because we wanna make sure that every child has access to that, and then you refine your instruction from there. We wanna make sure that we have research-based strategies for intervention. So again, for maybe fifteen to twenty percent, they may just need some intervention that we provide now through our, our literacy coaches. But there might be five percent of students that need something a little bit more intensive. So we need to make sure that we're using research, research-based intervention for that. So then, with our district-determined measures, again, we wanna continue to assess that data, design a schedule for when students will receive their intervention, and then, um, continue to progress monitor and form groups based on that. Goal three, and again, this is a joint goal between Dr. Tanner and, um, Pembroke and Pearly. By fall 2015, the Pearly and Pembroke schools will be integrated and share common vision of teaching and learning, as evidenced by curriculum program structures and ongoing collaboration. So we are looking, two years sounds like it's a long way away for the new school, but there are so many plans that need to happen before that. So this summer, the first goal is to develop a plan. It's the plan for the plan. So we will.
Place to start?
Exactly. Start at the first step, so that will be what we'll do. And then, over the next couple of years, the plan, really, it's, it's two-pronged. It's looking at curricula and programs, and then it's looking at the culture and the people, and wanting to make sure that we're, we're aligning not only the curricula, but also the beliefs and the traditions, and that we're just combining both schools, so that it's a very fluid transition when the children actually move over. Goal four, by June 2014, students will advance in their writing proficiency to meet grade level expectations, as defined by the Massachusetts English Language Arts Literacy Frameworks, as evidenced through writing rubrics. And this is actually the second year of that goal. Last year, um, this was on the SIP, it was the first year of that. And we know that you really wanna give goals more than one year. You have one year to get going, and then you refine it in that second year. So this coming year, we, um, now we will have our rubrics that are aligned to the standards, and we will be using the rubrics to assess. And then we'll continue our professional development and, um, continue in the vertical teams to assess the writing. And by June 2015, through technology, one hundred percent of parents will be aware of Pearly school activities, programs, procedures, and policies, and results will be tracked through data collection. And this sounds like it might be a lofty goal, but when we look at the, um, results that we had through our survey, we really wanna just make sure that parents are aware. Now, they may, again, you wanna get parents to it, you can't always control what they do with that, but we just wanna make sure that parents have access to that information. And one thing that we're really excited about doing is creating webcasts of this information, because over the past three years, we've learned, it's hard for families to get out, um, in the evening or come to events, and we've tried all different times of the day or the night, and it's hard. And especially at the Pearly, when you, the population is young, young children, it's even harder for parents to get out. And in our survey, it was indicated that parents would love to receive the information through the webcast. So we have, um, lots of great things planned, and, um, we're going to be producing our first webcast this summer. And, um, my plan is to hopefully be able to show it at Parent Information Night in September.
Excellent.
Is it great?
Excellent.
I know, but does sound good, doesn't it?
It does.
That's it.
It's good that you have that solid data on how parents wanna receive information. That's very interesting.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, sometimes you just, you have to ask the right question, and I think just kind of getting it, for a couple of years, we were asking, what do, what do parents want to see? And we would provide that, but that really, it wasn't as much as what they want, but how they want to get it.
Margaret, just a couple of questions. So on two twelve, two thirteen goals, and I know that was last year. And so, uh, where, on goal two, where it talks about students will continue to advance in their writing proficiency. And then, when I go back and I look at the other goals, and I remember, and then I, I read again, and it says, in the other goals, one and three, it says, for example, we'll read at grade level. How, going forward, how, and I know this is two twelve, two thirteen, but going forward, how do you measure students will continue to advance in their writing proficiency? What, what is this, what, what's a success, what's not a success?
What's the measure?
Well, the measure will be the rubrics. Again, the new, um, standards have benchmarks, what we want children to be able to do at the end of the year as far as their writing proficiency. So that's basically what we've done in the past couple of years. We're, we're refining instruction to make sure that we're teaching that, but that is the missing link. Well, how do you know they're getting it? So the, um, we've worked with Julie DeRoche, our curriculum director, to look at those rubrics that helps us assess. And again, it's not an exact science, like, um, a standardized test, because you, there's still that element of you have to look at the writing and then figure out where it closest fits the rubrics. But that, that happens with experience, it happens with repetition, and that's why this year, we were constantly looking at, at the writing and choosing, you know, what would we consider to be above standard? What is below, and then that's how you get good at that kind of work, so.
If you were to go to the celebration of growth, one of the things you would see is that each student would have, like, um, kind of a portfolio, a writing notebook, a writer's notebook. And one of the things that was really neat to see, so let's say one of the standards is, students will use capital letters to begin sentences, right? So you'd be able to look through their writing and see that most kids in September would not necessarily have that down. But through instruction and experience with reading, and doing writing, and getting, you know, conferencing, conferring, all those things, you know, when you start looking at the students' writing now, you're like, wow, they got that, you know? So that's the, that, to me, the best way to measure it is to actually just look at a portfolio of student work. Because it is quite amazing, particularly for those younger kids, to see how, how much they grow. And, and honestly, the teachers and the instructors have come a long way. I remember when I first came here and we talked about writing in Pearly, teachers would say, you know, the first grade kids would start writing in kindergarten, I mean, I mean, sorry, in first grade, like in January, right? They'd be writing in a journal. Now, they write from day one in kindergarten, and, you know, the teachers have just really done so many great things in their own modeling, and, you know, shared charts, and, oh, it's just amazing to see. But that's how you measure it, Rob, you take a look at, really looking at the writing.
And you remember the poems that Mrs. Beagans class brought?
Yes.
And they were just remarkable.
Yeah.
They were fabulous.
But you could, you, you know, when Margaret talked about a rubric, usually the rubric is like a, four is advanced, you know, three is, you know, so, so they'd show different descriptions, descriptors. And so you might look at the number of students, if three is where you want kids to be. In September, the number of kids that are scoring a three on a rubric. And then, in, in June, the number of kids that are scoring a three on the rubric. I mean, that's a quantitative way you could track it. But the best way to track performance improvement is by looking at samples of the work.
And, and both of those are happening.
Right, right. And that's a lot of the work Julie's doing, the vertical teams are establishing those benchmarks, getting a consistent rubric, so we don't have, uh, different teachers picking and choosing certain rubrics. You know, we're, we'll have that all standardized. But, you know, that takes time, because you need a lot of participation from teachers, you need, you know, um, people to be looking vertically and horizontally at the same time, and.
And if I could just add, and another component of that, and just, um, as we had started to do with the math exemplars as well, to do it blind, so that you're putting papers in the middle of the table, and you're taking, so you don't necessarily know what student it is, because, and that's a part of the challenge and the fun. It's, but it's similar to the way MCAS has scored, it's similar to the way any of the teacher tests are. There are real people that are reading those essays and having to make that decision. So, you know, it does take practice, and, but it really, it, it does show the growth, so.
And then there were two others, just, um, I'm not an educator, and so, uh, this would just be helpful to me and my terrible memory.
Okay.
That when I see DIBELS and Pennell Assessment and ASPNs, if there was a little, in parentheses, a reminder of what it is.
Thank you, Rob, that's, that is always a good reminder.
That would be really helpful to me, um, because I have a terrible memory. And then the other was really, uh, on goal three, the fall of 2015, Pearly-Pembroke.
The new goal, the new goal?
Yeah, the new goals, and, and I, I, my ears perked up when I heard the word "culture," and, um, so how do you, how do you, with this school that's being designed? Question one, I've got my building committee hat on now, I think, maybe I shouldn't, but are you comfortable with the, the form? The, the form is definitely. The form is definitely related to culture. They're, they're, they can be woven together.
Yeah.
Are you, are you comfortable where that's going? Are you happy where that's going at this point in time?
Well, you've got your, I think you're com, we're comfortable that the, the grades are in a similar configuration in a certain area of the school. I think we're comfortable with the, the fact that if it's going to be three stories, that the, the grades that are together make sense. I think we're comfortable with the special education classrooms being integrated within the structure of the, you know, of the, where the instruction, of the core instruction would be. I think, you know, we, we do have limits to where we can put things because of the loc, the, the location. I mean, I don't think we love where the playgrounds are necessarily located, and the fact that there are two of them. I mean, there, there are certainly some compromises that are going to be made, but the la, so it happens both ways, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the design, you know, the, the program can inform the design, but sometimes we have to make the design inform the program. And I think there's going to be some of that. I mean, the fact that we've been involved in the design at least, you know, all along, and the teachers have had a chance to participate, you know, that's been important. You know, we, we have a large cafeteria, which is a nice gathering space, it's nice and light and bright. We would have loved a slightly bigger gym, but we did get a slightly bigger gym, we needed a bigger gym. But, you know, I think the, what I think Margaret and Don are talking about, this whole culture issue, is I don't think anybody would disagree that we have two distinctly different schools. And while we've been working for a number of years now on pulling, you know, the commonalities together, like having responsive classroom, the way it's implemented in the schools may be different, right? There, there are certain traditions that each school has, and so our goal is to take the best of that in each place, and figure out, how do we navigate and negotiate a new shared culture that everybody, and we believe we need to start doing that. We've been already starting to do that, but we believe we need to continue to do that for two years.
I think that's great.
And it really has to be purposeful and deliberate, and where are the places where the staffs need to get together and discuss certain things? Where are the places that we, you know, we have more agreement than not, and, you know?
And certainly be prepared for the surprises.
Oh, absolutely. And then, then we have the, the matter of the sixth grade coming, too.
Well, I think that's the biggest challenge of the first two years.
So that's, that's, that's another challenge we have to think about as well, you know?
I can see how those fifth grade traditions-
Yes.
-are deeply settling into the minds of a second grader-
Yes.
-who's looking forward to fifth grade-
Yeah.
-as this big year, and it's-
It'll still be a big year, but clearly, it'll be, sixth grade will be bigger.
Yeah, so, so I think, you know, especially for the ones who are in the school now-
Yeah.
-and they're seeing the culture, and they're taking on the culture, they're going to have a, they're going to have to do some adjusting.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's exciting, though. Again, I came from a-
It is exciting.
-pre-K to grade six, before I came to Georgetown. And so, I take those experiences and, and those, the way those traditions happened, and the way the collaboration happened, and you see when the older kids are coming down, making the trek over to the primary wing to work with the kindergarten children, and so, you know, and those buddies that can't, you know, it's hard to happen at Purley, we do do it, the first grade does get together with kindergarten and pre-K, and that's awesome. But when you really see a fourth grader working with a kindergartner, you know, that, that's the magic. So it, it will, you have to be, as Carol said, you have to be purposeful about it, but I think it's exciting, and so I think that excitement will carry through, and children will get excited about it, too.
And so the teachers coming over have to be, that'll be new for them.
Yes, yes, there's a lot of new-
To welcome those older-
And I'm sure they have their reservations. I mean, Purley's a wonderful school, and, you know, you get, you know, you get comfortable there, and, yeah, and it feels like it's going to somebody else's school. Pembroke is still Pembroke, and the Pembroke teachers are there, even though we have to remember, the Pembroke teachers are really not in their same school, that everything's new for them as well. I mean, everything's new for everybody, right? And so, we want to understand the emotions that go with it, and let people, you know, have those moments. And at the same time, we want to be thinking about, how can we sta, you know, begin to establish some new opportunities for people to come together and make new colleagues and do friends, and, and I think it will be much easier for us to coordinate curriculum, it'll be much easier for us to discuss assessments, it'll, it'll just be much easier in many ways once we're physically in one location. But it's a process.
Sure.
And it's, and it's not, you know, always smooth. So-
Thank you.
It's important that they, they make it, you know, a goal, so that all the teachers know, and everybody knows, we're, we're all working on this together, and it's going to come together.
Any questions for Margaret?
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
Moral support.
As long as she doesn't ask any questions. You're okay. So, you want me to jump right in?
Yeah.
You're okay. So, first of all, I want to thank members of the School Advisory Council, Michelle Smith, Amy Purcell, Suzanne McDonald, Michelle Keenan, Jamie Hansen, Elizabeth Carroll, Sandy Migno, and Jamie, and Monica McGinnis, for their attending meetings, our monthly meetings. And this plan that we're presenting tonight is a product of not just the School Advisory Council, but of the teachers. We spend a lot of time going back and forth with the teachers, making sure we're all have the same vision and goals in mind when we do this. So if you see on the front of our school improvement plan, we have snow shoeing, which was a huge undertaking this year. There were days we had snow this year, so we were very happy, because we purchased them last year and didn't get to use them. But also, just to give you a flavor of the fifth grade tradition, I think that we're talking about, we just had our fifth grade play.
Yeah.
Aristocats, which is just-
Fabulous.
-a lot of, it's just a lot of fun for the kids, and I think they feel really good about what they accomplished together as a, as a group, so that's just some highlights-
A lot of work, a lot of work.
Yeah, it was, it was fun. And Purley had a chance to come over and see it, so. Start off with our vision and core values. And back in 2008, we spent a year just kind of carving out our vision and core values. And the reason we did that is because we wanted to have a path of what we were going, about why we make the decisions we make, when it comes to budget, when it comes to cuts, when it comes to goals, when it comes to our celebrations. And I think we know we're going to be transitioning to a new Pembroke, but this is something that the community put together back in 2008, and it still drives who we are and how we define ourselves as a community. So often, you'll see in our goals tonight reflects the things that are important to us, and community is really important to us at Pembroke. And we always are trying to build a strong community where everybody feels welcome, and everybody feels like they're part of something pretty special. I'm just going to go over our quick layer of accomplishments. I think one of the big accomplishments we all feel really good about, the staff is very excited about, is the addition of technology this year. We now have a mobile laptop, Apple laptop cart with 25 laptops. It's great to go into a second grade classroom and see every child at a desk with a laptop, and being able to, I'm sure they're going home telling mom and dad they want a laptop for Christmas, an Apple laptop at them. But it's, it's great to get the tool, and they're not inhibited by the fact of not having a mouse, they love the touchpad, and they're in second grade. So we're trying to, what the goal was, to try and put the computers in the classrooms and integrate with the teachers. That was the goal. So this computer wasn't seen as a special, something separate, but something that, a tool that enhances and makes our, our learning even better. So that's kind of the goal we're studying for for next year, that's our hope and dream. But through that, we've had, we've had, able to put a smart board in every classroom. And I have to say that there were no smart boards purchased by school budget. So to have that accomplishment next year, to have a smart board in every single classroom at Pembroke, through all various sources, GEF, PTA, various fundraisers, Square One Art, has just been, I think it's something that we celebrate, and I think the teachers feel really good about. And now our goal is to have a document camera in every classroom and create that kind of great teaching place. We also have an iPad cart that gets used a lot by the students and teachers. We have 25 iPads that go around in a cart, and that's been great. In addition to that, we renovated our library this year. What we're finding in our library, because of the nooks and the kindles and so forth, we want to create a place that the library scene is a place to get information, and it doesn't necessarily always have to be in the form of books. So we have seven IMAX in the library now, and a mobile smart board there. And we're teaching big six and little three research skills, but we want kids to see the library's a place to get information, not a place just to take out a book. And so we're trying to create that kind of atmosphere, and that's one of our going-forward goals. This year, we started with an instructional leadership team, which was a representative from every grade level and specialist area, and our coaches, literacy coach, and math interventionist. It was a great team. The goal, the vision of the team was to kind of decide, what is the data telling us about our school? Where do we need to go next? How do we need to get better? And some of the big things that we did this year is we created an intervention block in mathematics for grade five, six weeks before, MCAS, which we think were really, we saw great benefits to doing that, so we were going to expand that next year. But the other thing that was really powerful was we did learning walks. So we freed up teachers to go through the school for an hour and visit everybody's classroom. And the goal was to try and find out, what are the professional development opportunities that we have done that have stuck? So we've spent a lot of time and a lot of money on professional development over the years. What are the things that we, we never get a chance to go in other teachers' classes, and I do. I see what happens every day, and they never get that luxury. But I think it was so exciting for them when they came back and said, they can really see how in third grade, how the writing builds to the fifth grade, they can really see the continuum of the curriculum. And we met as a staff, and we said, so what are the things that we know, we can see that are really, really part of who we are as a culture? The responsive classroom, you know, the, the student work up, the student thinking up on anchor charts around the school, around the classrooms, the fact that everybody has classroom rules, the way we provide a nice meeting area to do. So we came back and we debriefed, and I think what it did is, you know, Pembroke's been on this roller coaster of trying to climb that mountain of change for the many years.
That's why I thought you picked the, the cover here, that you're climbing the mountain over and over.
Yeah, we're climbing the journey, and I think this year, for the first year, we felt like we, we have really, you know, we've done a lot of change over the years, and we feel really good about the work we're doing. So it was kind of a celebration, too, for us to kind of say, wow, what we're doing is really sticking, and it's really happened. So what we've put as a goal in the next year is that everybody in the school's going to get that chance to do that learning walk at some time, a couple of times a year, because I think it's powerful when we can see each other's work. So I talked about the renovation, subgroup targeted intervention. We took our MCAS, and we looked, really looked, fine-tuned the students that were having difficulty in MCAS, and we provided extra MCAS support in the morning time. We did use cams and stams and cars and stars. It's kind of like a MCAS, but it was predictable kind of text, a predictable kind of math repetition. They prepared them for the kind of things that they're going to have to do in MCAS. And the, when I met with the special education staff, they really felt that that helped the kids when they approached the test, because we don't really teach MCAS, we try not to, but we do believe our curriculum prepares kids to do well in MCAS. We feel really good about our school-wide meetings, whole school celebrations that we do every month. They're really part of who we are as a community, and they really are part of the things that we value, and the things we really think the kids come to school, we want them to come to school and have fun, we also want them to come to school and learn, and then we try and combine those kinds of, so the learning experiences for our kids. Safety and wellness with the new cameras this year. Pembroke was probably the most open of all the schools, as far as not having a lot of security, and a lot of buildings and up in the woods. So I think the addition of the cameras and the locks and giving teachers passes has really helped. And last thing for accomplishments, I can't thank the PTA and GEF enough for all they do for our school, all the technology and the additions that we have, whether it be, you know, books, to presentations to authors, to things coming in, you know, it's all because parents have worked hard to really help give us, give those kids the extra things in our community. So what I'm going to do is quickly go over our goals for the upcoming year. And what I did this year is, instead of having a goal for, we have MCAS at Pembroke in grades three, four, and five, so rather than breaking it down to, to reading, writing, and math, we just decided that it would be better if we just talk about increasing student achievement and use reading, writing, and math as, as the benchmark, because I think everything that's happening in those content areas is happening consistently. So one of our goals is to increase student achievement and support high academic learning environments that successfully balance content and pedagogy across all content areas. And we're going to use our MCAS. We always try and aim, our target is that 60% student growth percentile. That's where we want every child to grow 60% every year. And when we see that, if you know it's not proficient, and it's a needs improvement and grow 60%, we feel really good about that. And we'd like to improve 5% in each content area. We know that'll be a stretch this year, you know, with our math scores are really high in fifth grade, we had 82% proficient and advanced, so, but we're going to keep plugging away. We really think we're doing the things that really help our kids be successful. So, some of the goals underneath that would be, we're, in each one of our units, we're doing a kind of a pre-assessment, a diagnostic assessment. We've been working on it a little bit this year, we're going to continue next year, we can, before we teach the unit, we find out where kids are at, what do they need, rather than we just go through the program and go through the lesson plans. And then, what are the formative assessments we do in that unit that are really tied to these standards? And at the end, what is the summative assessment that doesn't necessarily target what we were taught, but more what are the standards our kids are expected to know and be able to do? So at each unit of study, in reading, math, and writing, we have tied those to our units of study, and we want to make that clean, grades two to five. I know fifth grade is pretty close, but grades two to five, we want to make sure we have that all the way through. By 2015, we want to implement a response to invention model that, that utilizes data to monitor student progress. That's our hope, I think, for all of our schools in Georgetown. We're all reaching for that goal. And then our instructional leadership team continues to work closely to examine our school data, professional development, and really, our, our schedule and structure, we met this past Tuesday to go over next year's schedule, and what specialists, what kind of specialists we're going to have, and how we can plan for the upcoming year. And that's really helpful for our, our special education teachers, if they have the schedule ahead of time. So we really went back and said, does this schedule work for our kids? So that team is really, becomes the leadership team in our school, and it's been a real great, a great addition. We want to do learning walks with all staff next year. We want to implement daily and weekly conference notes in reading and writing. I think keeping that ongoing informal data on a regular basis is really important. So when we are going around, working with kids, that we have notes about where kids are at, what they're doing, what, what feedback we gave them, where we're going next. As teachers, we want to keep that anecdotal data on a regular basis. Writers workshop, we still have to pay attention to next year as the MCAS shift. It's not just going to be personal narrative anymore, that we make sure that we have a good trajectory for our writing, so we have the narrative opinion persuasive, and then the informational procedural writing. So we did have to shift some of our units, and what we're also noticing is, because the rigor has increased in our writing units, we have to change in fifth grade, because some of the things we're doing in second and third grade, we're doing in fifth now, but because we're doing them in second and third, we have to really up the ante a little bit in fifth grade, so we know that. And the last goal is, kind of a district goal, is to adopt a universal screening tool for all content areas. That gives us kind of, kind of a benchmark of, do we have the right curriculum? Are we doing the right kind of teaching for our kids, and are we making sense in our instruction? Next goal is, a goal that I feel strongly about is our school community goal. So we want to get our parents involved, that they fill out their parent survey, we want to get 50% feedback, and then we want to get 80% positive feedback. I think the last, my first year in Pembroke, we had a lot of feedback on our parent survey. But over the years, we, it's become less and less parents, you know, filling out the parent survey. Now, we do, this year, we did it hard copy, and we did it online, we tried it several different ways. I look at it as a positive, that maybe people don't have things to, but we'd still like people to give, give us some feedback, the things they'd like to see changed, or things, you know, particularly, I think next year, we'll probably get more, because we have the new school coming, and I'm sure there's, people have some words that they'd like to share, or things they'd like to see. One of the things we do before MCAS is we do this spark, and it's Dr. Ratty's book he's written about, this whole idea, concept of really increasing our, yeah, movement, and getting our blood flow and our heart rate up, and that really scientifically has, releases our brain to really think better and be more, pay attention. So every time we have MCAS, we get the kids in, in the cafeteria, we dance "Up a Storm", and it puts everybody in a good mood. So we're playing great songs, sometimes I play the oldies, and the kids will say, "Dr. Tanner, that was a real old song." You know, but, and then we'll play the new songs, and I just, and then I play the pontoon bow.
You can't find the new ones that are appropriate for kids.
Yes, and then we have to find the ones that are appropriate. But everybody leaves their feeling good as we go to MCAS. So one of the things that was suggested by school advisory is, why couldn't we do that once a week? You know, pick a Monday or whatever day of the week we do and every morning, that morning, we start in our classrooms, you know, doing a little true music. So we're, uh, we've kind of tossed that idea out there and everybody thinks, you know what? It puts everybody in a good mood with that music and it gets our, our heart flowing. So let's try and do it once a week and make it our spark day during the, during the school year. Um, that's one of our goals. Uh, second is our fifth grade student council has grown so big. When I first started, it was myself and Elizabeth Carroll. And what's happening because there, our kids are so interested in doing so many different things that they give back. We're going to try and create a mentor, so where kids are assigned to one person. So they're kind of, they're more focused on what they need to accomplish than they have a person to report to. So they're not always seeking out Elizabeth and myself, because I think I have a hundred and ten kids in student council. So trying to coordinate those kids.
Anybody who wants to be in student council can be.
They write an essay about how they're going to make a difference and then they do different jobs. And sometimes they come up with their own jobs. We, you know, we, we raise money for water in Africa. We've done all sorts of different projects this year. So we're going to give like Mike Walsh would be a mentor and, you know, our music teacher would be a mentor. And so they are charged with tw- of twenty or fifteen, twenty, and they would meet monthly with them. And we kind of collaborate on these things. So I think it would make, bring a little more, a little, um, and we talked to our fifth graders about that. We asked them, we've asked them to fill out a survey a couple of weeks ago and we said, how do you think we can improve? And I said, one of the things I thought of, and they all agreed that would be great. They think that would be great to have a kind of a mentor. So, um, and the last goal in this, in this is, uh, one community, one book. I wanted to share that with you. We haven't actually, um, talked about it with our community yet, but it's one of our goals. This is something I've always wanted to do is, um, this year we're going to ask as part of our reading, summer reading, not our only reading, but part of our summer reading is, everybody in the school is going to read one book. And that book is going to be kind of, fits into our values about who we are as a school community. But it's also going to be the kickoff to our school-wide meetings and we all, we'd like to do cross-grade level, um, discussions on the book. And the book we chose this year, and it was done by the instructional leadership team and the literacy, is The Three Questions. So we've, parents, this is available in our library. It'll be available at the Georgetown library. And we're also going to put it online. One of our fifth graders is going to read it online. We're trying to encourage parents to actually read with kids too. As part of this, encourage the family to get and go evolve in discussions and see, it's more of a picture book. Picture book with great illustrations, but has a great message behind it. And then we're going to use that as kind of a, a place to, um, kick off in September. And we hope to have like little book groups with second, third, fourth, and fifth graders talking about the meaning of the book. There are also some activities that'll go along with it. They pick, there's one activity per grade level. Like if you, what's important to you would maybe be one of the activities. So it, it, um, it is something I'm really excited about and the staff's really excited about too. So every teacher has a copy of the book, so staff, parents, and students will hopefully all have an opportunity to read that book. In addition to their other summer.
I love the idea. It's a, I think it's a great idea. It's one that's popular on college campuses and a lot of places. So I think it also prepares the, the students as they, you know, they go through, they get to college and they're having a one book program and they're like, oh, I did that in second grade. I think that you're building that connection.
Yeah. And it's, and we think, we picked a pretty good book. We, um, are trying to get the author to come visit too. So that, we're hoping to have the author come. He's in New York. He's tough to get, but we've been, we've been emailing him back and forth to see if he actually come out.
That would be amazing.
You know, that would really.
Is he responding?
Not yet, but. We're going to keep plugging away.
I have one of the kids send a letter doing.
Yeah, that's what probably do have some of the.
That's a good idea.
And then we have our goal to, the Pearly Pembroke. I think, you know, the transition plan, we're going to start a plan, it's kind of like when you're a principal and you come new to a district, you have an entry plan. Well, it's kind of our entry plan into building this whole new Pembroke facility is, you know, figuring out what's that going to look like. So this is the same as Margaret had, um, with our, you know, first we're going to put the plan together so we can kind of figure out where we go. Um, and then we always have the goal to think about our technology. That's always been important to us. And, um, you know, thinking about how ways that we can integrate technology so it becomes a tool. And it's not just a specialty specialist area. And, um, you know, and then also integrating the science. This year we have the invention convention, something we've always wanted to do. But it's always was something we're trying to fit into the curriculum. But this year, because we had an extended year, we started to pilot in fifth grade our invention convention. And if you have a chance on June twentieth to come over, some of the inventions are unbelievable that our kids have come up with. But the thing that's amazing to me is I go through the classrooms every day taking pictures is, the excitement in our fifth graders at this time of the year. They're so excited about building and putting things together and testing it out and sharing their ideas. And they have, have to keep a journal of things they tested out as a scientist and they'll, we're going to present it to school with poster board and they have to create a model of what they're doing. So if you get a chance to come by. And so our hope is that, you know, every grade level will have some sort of big science project next year too to keep thinking about that whole idea of science being inquiry.
Well, so this year it's just the fifth graders?
Just the fifth grade.
And will the other kids have a chance to see what the fifth graders have created?
Oh, yeah.
What time Donna, you were telling me.
The parents are coming at twelve forty-five and the kids will do it in the morning. The kids will go through the classrooms in the morning, so they'll get a chance to see.
Four to one forty-five, do you have time? It's based on a story by Leo Tolstoy.
Yeah.
Wow.
And then we have our subgroup that we'll, we're paying attention to still. We still look at our cams and stams and cars and stars. Um, and I think one of the things that we did this year with the intervention block with the wind, what I need. We're going to, next year we're going to expand that with grades three and five next year. So we've already carved out the time for that and we're going to do it in reading and mathematics. That will give kids what they need. We're hoping for instruction and really help them as they go next, uh, as they prepare next year for, uh, their grade level content. And then we'll have monthly data team meetings that we're going to continue with to tech, uh, subgroup. Um, and again, we're going to continue with our technology and we're going to have, this is Carol's idea, we're going to have Technology Monday. So once a month, we're going to have professional development for teachers. Um, we're going to give them a survey in September and ask them what technology they still feel not comfortable with, you know, and what things they'd like to learn, you know, whether it be the iPad, how they can integrate in the classroom. So once a month, every Monday, the staff will be, come to the library, volunteer to do some technology. Learn, because we have so much new technology in our building, um, I think, you know, people want to just find out all the things they can do, whether it be a laptop, to an iPad, to a document camera, to a smart board. I know Barry's already started a few smart board classes, but I think people, there's not enough, you know, they can't get enough of it. They want to.
He's doing that at Pembroke as well, right?
At Pearly, yeah.
Pearly as well, yeah.
And then this is the evaluation, um, goal that we all have. And there's nothing more important than the teacher in the classroom with kids. And I, I feel very fortunate to work at a building. We have amazing teachers. They are just unbelievable and, you know, they've really climbed the mountain. They've done the journey. And I think this year they're feeling, they're feeling really good about the work they've done. So we're ready to do things like the one community, one book and the invention convention. So I applaud all the work they do. I'm just glad I get a chance to work with them.
Questions?
Are you still, um, next year, will WPP still be a program, uh, uh, you'll be working with?
Yeah, fourth and fifth grade. We, we see a benefit to doing that, because we, it's not just about the writing, but it's sometimes we do prompter kind of open response questions with it. Um, and we think that that's really helped us a lot in our open response, um, in our writing. Um, and it's only homework and it's something we go over and it gives us quick feedback and quick data. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's not costly, but, um, it's something that's pretty valuable.
And it's only fourth and fifth?
Only fourth and fifth.
I just wanted to, um, reiterate something that you said where you have generosity of the PTA and Georgetown Education Foundation. And I'm curious, did, I, I remember reading in the, in the Georgetown paper that the PTA was looking for a position. Did that?
They got it. They got a president.
Fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. Very exciting.
So anyways, I just wanted to reiterate that for people who might be watching at home, how important and appreciated those two groups are. The PTA and the Georgetown Education Foundation.
Yeah, they've been great for us.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, the, uh, the spark caught my attention, um, music stimulating the brain and, and whatnot. Um, I think that's a great, it's a great intervention. I think it's really pretty cool. Um, the only question that came up for me is, um, the issue of dancing and heart rates. What, I'm just curious, what kind of heart rate are you trying, are you trying to get them up to a certain heart rate?
He's actually, well, yeah, we'd like them. We'd like them. We ask them to take their pulse before they start. And then we ask them to make sure that their pulse is racing, but Mike goes over that in the phys ed class about heart rate and what their heart rate should be. He does that on a regular basis. They actually have a spark curriculum we use in physical education.
Yeah.
It really talks about that. So we don't really, when we're doing the spark for MCAS, we don't ask them specifically what their heart rate should be. We just ask them to make sure they're moving around and, you know, they, they have built up a sweat and they feel like they're, you know, they've, their heart is racing and that's when they know they're. But it's nice to, you know, in the, when the MCAS, it's nice when they leave there with a smile on their face, kind of alleviates some of the anxiety too.
Well, I, I, and I think that's where the, sort of the questions just popped up for me, which is the idea of feeling good through music and relieving stress prior to going into MCAS makes all the sense in the world. Um, the heart rate issue and, uh, sugar and fatigue and how that may or may not be an issue once you get into your MCAS. And I don't know if that's been discussed in this program or not, but it would be something that I would be interested to make sure.
Yeah, he's, he's written a book and he's, then he now has created the curriculum. It's very popular in high schools. These high schools really looked at ways that they could change the way they structure their day. So, you know, your most difficult class is physics, you know, you need to have a break in between this. So they work closely with health and wellness programs to try and reschedule the day. It really had me thinking last year, because we changed our fourth grade to have a break in the middle of the morning at ten fifteen, because we really felt like they did their math first thing and those kids needed that break. And we, we thought that was important. Based on what I had read from his book, I thought that, you know, we need to think about that, how hard it is for our kids in schools nowadays to sit there extended periods of time. You know, with paper and pencil and we don't have a lot of opportunities for them to move around. And we can't forget about that.
No.
Particularly for boys.
Exactly.
Um, you know, I, I just went to the Youth at Risk Conference and, uh, the keynote speaker was Michael Thompson, who wrote Raising Cain. And he talks about, uh, you know, just the, the difficulty that we have with boys because they need to get up and they need to physically walk around. And, you know, in, in writing, he said that the average, um, tenth grade boy writing nation, this is nationwide, is about the same level as the average eighth grade girl. And if you look at even our SATs, the difference in the writing SAT between the boys and the girls, the girls score thirty points higher than the boys do in writing. So this is definitely something that can be carried on into high school. I think they should do this program before they take the SATs as well.
What I.
It's fabulous.
What I guess I just throw out there to everybody, to the administration, to the committee as well, uh, there, there are other interventions as well. Um, and I think there are, I think there are directions that I know in education, I know in my field, healthcare, they're absolutely moving into. Um, but meditation is one of them. And all the various forms of meditation. Um, and then of course, there's nature, which is playing a big role in that. So there are other interventions out there that if, if as a district, as a, as a town, we could be talking about this stuff, I think it would be a great discussion point for the future.
Uh, I, I just want to say too, the atmosphere, I think at both, all the schools, I think the atmosphere is great, but both Pearly and Pembroke, just the welcoming feel that you have, you know, Pearly, I remember people saying, oh, you know, you're leaving Pearly, you're going to go up to Pembroke. I gotta say, I think that Pembroke is just as warm and welcoming and you just feel like everyone there just wants, you know, to make sure that you're coming in there, you, you don't have a problem. They want to, you know, address whatever it is. And then you go into the middle high school and it's the same thing. You know, a couple of years ago, I didn't necessarily feel that way with the middle high school. I thought it was kind of, oh, these are older kids now, what are you coming in for? But now it's like, you know, what can I do for you? And it's really nice. Because you don't feel like you're interfering or you're being a bother to people, you know? So I feel like I can just go into any of the schools, as long as I get buzzed in.
That's really nice to hear, because that's, that's been our district focus. I mean, I think it's.
We had that as district goal, that's.
Right. I, I can agree with that. I do know what you mean.
The parents like that.
Yeah, it's absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Partnerships with parents and community, that's one of our major goals. It's been for years.
Doing a great job with it.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for noticing that. They, they do work really hard at it.
All right.
Great.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you. So we will.
So you can, now you can mush your motions together.
Okay. So, um, the chairman entertained a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Pearly School Improvement Plan as presented by Principal Margaret Marr, as well as the Pembroke School Improvement Plan, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, as presented by Principal Dr. Tanner.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Margaret, you can stay.
Stay.
All right. So popular. Getting really comfortable there, Margaret.
You might have been thinking, why isn't she moving? I'm excited for this.
Hi Donna.
Hello. I'm excited for this.
Yes.
Okay.
Ladies, before we dive into this Rob, I just want to comment that, um, with regards to some of our programming for next year in the special ed department, we're looking at incorporating meditation and yoga for our students. So we've already engaged in that conversation. Thank you for your support.
You have a lot of support in this room.
All right. Jimmy?
Sure. So, um, again, and as you know, we're assessing, uh, taking a look at all the different programs that we have across the district for special education. Uh, we invited Dr. Jim Early to come in. He's done an assessment. He's going to present to you in August. Um, one area that, um, Margaret and I have been looking at is, uh, how can we service our young students, our early intervention students that are coming in at the age of three years old? And what we've discovered is what we really need is to have a sub-separate intensive program for these students who are coming in at three that aren't quite ready for the integration of a, um, pre-K program. It has some typically developing peers, it has larger classroom size. So we've taken a look at, um, what are the requirements that we might need to put this kind of a program together so that we can better service these little ones? And sort of catch them young, uh, provide them with, uh, very intense services, if you will, in order to bring them along as far as possible. So.
So the greenhouse program, where children blossom at the Pearly School, so.
Guess who named it?
Love the name of it.
That we envision that.
The garden theme working.
Exactly.
Garden theme.
It's not about a theme for education at all.
And again, just, um, when I think of a greenhouse, it is that place that's very warm and nurturing and where, and very self-contained, where you do want to give children that very best beginning. So this would be an opportunity to have, um, very high ratio, I always get that wrong, um, with adult support. And at this point in time, we might be looking at two or three children in the program. Um, we have to wait and see, because again, you know, what often happens when, when we're that first school, um, children may be in early intervention and then when they turn three, they're eligible to come to a public school. But for some children whose needs at that point in time are significant, we don't have a program for them. So, um, we are hoping to provide that place and then bring them into school. And I can say, and I am not ashamed to say it all, at all, our staff is phenomenal. And, um, our special ed teachers and our regular ed teachers that work with the special ed staff. So I am so confident that all we need is to get the children in and we will be able to provide for them. So this is that opportunity. Um, we have the space and are carving out a nice little area, warm and inviting for children. And so, um, what we're, what we're asking for is to get your approval. And then, once we have your approval, we can start on, on being able to put it together and then just wait for the children. Because again, sometimes you, you just don't know who's out there. You have to wait. Then when they turn three, and then we'll get the phone call from EI. So we're thinking at this point in time, we will have two children and then possibly next fall, we'll have a couple other children that would be appropriate for this program. So we want to make sure that we, again, we, we have everything in place so that we can start it when we have the children.
And we did an analysis of what would be the entrance criteria for these children, what would be the exit criteria for these children. We did a cost analysis of, um, can we afford it right now? What is the long-term outcome if you have children who have such significant needs? Oftentimes what happens is they end up being placed outside the district and we really don't want that. We want to keep our children here in Georgetown. And as Margaret said, we assessed our staff, we had conversations with our staff and, you know, we really believe based on the criteria of what the children, as well as what the certifications and experience of the staff, that we really are looking forward to keeping these children here in their home school.
So I'm just curious, what happens, you have these exit criteria? And what happens if a child doesn't meet those exit criteria, um, by the age that his peers are moving on? What, does, do we, do we keep this child in, in the greenhouse program? Does the child progress?
It's a combination of things that could happen. So when you consider a program such as this, there's a, um, a law that says that you can have students within forty-eight months of age together in a program that's meeting their different intellectual developmental, physical needs. Um, these children are substantially, um, below where other children their age might be. So the hope is always that, uh, they're in the least restrictive environment. And that might include just lunch or recess or some types of engagement with typical peers that way, up to the point where maybe they're out for just maybe a half an hour for a quick reading lesson or something like that, and anything in between. So to say what would happen exactly, we can't say, because it's so individualized for children. So what we would do is reassess once a year. Where is the child at? What does the testing tell us? What does the data collection tell us that we've been doing? You know, can we move the child out for twenty, thirty, forty percent of the day? Have them in the sub-separate class long? We don't know. It's, it all depends.
But this is an early childhood program, so it's not just a preschool program. Right, but I'm just saying, so as that child gets older, we continue to have specialists in place.
Right.
And it, yeah.
So there's not, the, I guess what I'm thinking of is if you have a child that has that level of need, that moving that child from institution to institution to institution is probably not in the child's best interest. So if we're gonna bring in children this young and offer to meet their needs, can we continue to meet their needs?
Yes.
Do we have the staff and the programs in place? That's my question.
It would develop, right.
We would have to grow it.
Right.
Okay.
Because when we are looking at, again, um, Georgetown is growing.
Right.
And so, as we, as the town grows and the population grows, you, just by nature of how it is, you tend to have more children perhaps with disabilities. And again, maybe 10 years ago, there wasn't a need. Or if there were maybe one child, you know, we unfortunately didn't have the program for them. But now we're seeing, you know, when we start to see two, three, and then on the horizon, maybe four or five, we do, we feel like this is something we want to create. So then, perhaps this is a program that travels. Because the other part of it is, you know, again, the hope being that you get a child young, you provide the intervention, and then they won't need that intensive support, that maybe they wouldn't need that, you know, they wouldn't need the greenhouse program. So, then you, obviously you want to grow children out of that. Well, maybe, maybe in two or three years, we don't need this now, but maybe it's needed at another age. And then maybe in five or six years, you have to re-implement. So it, as, you know, Donna said, you have to look at your population.
Just be responsive to the population.
As we're always looking at our programs, who are the children?
And if there was one child, we would not, we would not be doing this. But, you know, we, we, what we're seeing is that there's a need. Um, and this is kind of what we've done, we've done with all of our other special ed programs. We had like a population of students that were on the autism spectrum. We didn't have a program for them at the middle school. So, what a shame if they all would have had a wonderful opportunity in the elementary school and then we would have had to send them all out of district, not to mention the costliness of that.
Yes.
But more importantly, you know, this is their community, we want these kids to stay here. So we, that's why we've grown the programs, to have that continuum of services all the way through. This is one of the populations that we had not been able to, we hadn't put a program in place because basically we didn't need it.
Right.
So, obviously there's a, a need emerging and that's why we're creating it. And, and funding is always a question. So on the back of your paper, and then what follows in your hand, in your book behind it, your packet behind it is a summary because, you know, we're talking about this from the preschool revolving account. This, you know, here's the cost of what we would be looking for. And then we give you the summary of the preschool revolving account. So you can in fact see that, that the program costs can be absorbed, uh, in that account. And there's, there would still be the balance that we have said that we would need in the event of, you know, another paraprofessional needs to be hired or we, we need to have some place to go, um, regarding the preschool.
Is there, um, and let me first say, um, you should be quite proud of, of what you're doing with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there the possibility that, um, it's kind of going to Alana's question of three years down the road or four years down the road, that the cost of the program would be growing such that it could not be supported?
Well, what we would have to, we're gonna have to look, if it becomes a program, let's for example, at Pembroke, then we wouldn't be wanting to charge the preschool revolving account for it. Um, so we would need to be looking at shifting money within the budget. But remember, we have diff, the different, the special education needs vary. If we were to able to be, to bring some children back from out of district, that goes back into the pot. So it's a, it's a, no, it's a, it's a shifting of, um, expenses. So, um, if we need the program, we would need to find the money for the program, so.
Right. Does that happen, Carol? I mean, if we've placed a student out of district and then the, we decide that we're going to, we hire the faculty and now we can meet that student's needs? We can say, you no longer can have an out-of-district placement, you can come back because we can meet your needs?
Yes, we can. And we were very successful when we set the programs up in the past, when we decided to go in this direction. When, uh, Dave Dempsey was the Special Education Director, we were very successful. We went from 27 students out of district to 15 students out of district. So, you know, there were, there were a number of kids that, you know, some that graduated, obviously. But there were a, you know, a number of kids, particularly at the high school, where we were able to bring them back. And that the recovery of those expenses got redirected into making sure we have the appropriate staffing for the program.
It all comes under, um, really assessing and understanding who your student population is.
Sure.
Ensuring that when you set up a program, that you consider, you know, the professional development that you're providing with your teachers, um, the fidelity for which the staff is, um, running the program, as well as supporting for students who are doing inclusion, supporting the general education staff as well so that they're able to understand who these students are and how they can support the students. So we don't just say, oh, today we're gonna have this program, let's bring some kids back. There's a lot of thoughtful planning that happens in preparation for it so that, you know, when the kids do come back, they have a, um, terrific program to come back to that's thought about what their needs are.
Right. And you might, you know, depending on the needs of the kids from, from early intervention, you may have a couple of years where you don't have children of this severity in terms of need. And they can be done, you know, integrated very well into the preschool. Maybe they need speech services or perhaps the autism spectrum program, the ASD program is appropriate that we have in place. Um, and then you, you would shift the funds. Right? So, it's, every year, we, you know, we have to look at that.
I hope something, I hope that kind of trend would, would take place. My, my, my fear and my intuition is that this is going to be growing. Not, not the program, but that, that there are going to be more children.
Well, it's very well, very well could be.
And that's what we're trying to anticipate.
Prepare for that.
Prepare for that.
But what you, what you, what we all have to also think about is every time you send a student out of district, you're looking probably between 80 to $100,000, even at a collaborative program. So again, it, it, you know, we always talk about the money, but it's not driven solely by the money. It really is driven by, by our philosophy that we believe, you know, it's all concept of community. You know, everybody in Georgetown belongs in this community and should be educated in this community.
That's right.
It's enriching to everyone, you know, uh, no matter what you're-
And that's the definition of a family and-
Yes.
I don't, I don't know who it was that said it, I, for some reason, I think it was Gandhi, but, you know, the, you can judge a society by how it takes care of those with the greatest need or something to that effect. And, um, you could get rid of society and put it into school district, you know? And, and it's something for Georgetown to be quite proud of, I think.
And I, you know, I think, you know, we're gonna talk about it with our strategic, strategic plan is, we also always need to also think about kids on the other end of that spe- spectrum too. So it's, you know, it's really about everybody, you know? And, um, you know, that, you know, we're, I think we're doing a really good job focusing on the kids that really, you know, have the farthest to go and the greatest challenges in terms of learning. But we, you know, we always want to be thinking about all sides of that. That's where you might have to invest some money down the road.
Gifted and talented.
Yeah, or, or however you, whatever we call it, yeah.
And is this just strictly for Georgetown residents?
At, at, at this point, I would envision it is.
Yes.
Um, again, that's a decision that can be made at some point in time, if we would want to open that up. Um, that it's, again, a possibility, but for right now, we're, again, just looking at the population that we have.
Right. And it is the kind of program where we could look at something if there, you know, if, if, let's say, the ra, the ratios were such that you could take up to seven children, let's say, and we have, and we have three or four. Right, you, you know, if there was a, a student who was a good match for the program, you know, we wouldn't go solicit, but every once in a while, we get asked, you know, because people know we have a program and this, that, or the other thing. You know, we, we could, we could entertain that. But that wouldn't be our motivation.
Do many other districts have programs like this? And do we know the, like, the success of them? I was just curious. Or is it new? Is this something that's sort of emerging?
It's not something that's new, um, it's a concept that has existed, but oftentimes what hap, what's happened is in a town the size of Georgetown, because the numbers are so small, that they often go to, the child often goes to a collaborative to have their needs met. Um, again, we feel that we have a growing population of students who need these types of services. Um, we believe that we can, you know, quite easily meet these children's needs. Um, so that's why we want to develop the program. And, you know, there may be other surrounding towns, you know, that are small that may have one or two, as Carol had suggested, that, you know, once this is established, that we can say, hey, you know, we have this program, we have a couple of openings if anybody has a need. It's the way, you know, I've, I'm finding that in our particular collaborative, that the school districts are starting to work together is by, you know, seeking out, what is your program in autism or what is your program for social emotional? Let's talk about how we can work together as other districts, which is nice.
It looks great.
Any other questions for them?
That's a good question.
We can vote, yeah, you want to vote? So, I know, I think there's a motion in here somewhere.
Um, question. Sure. Would you, you know, just looking at some of these conditions, would you be working with the physicians of these children to understand, like, how successful the program is for them? Like, would there be that kind of feedback loop?
Yes, there's always, when we have team meetings or when we're gathering data on children, what we always do is include like a physician, you know, or if it's a therapist, or we look for those outside evaluators to be part of the team and to participate and help. So for example, if we have a student, um, who has a vision impairment of some sort, well, we're not gonna hire a vision specialist, but we're going to consult with somebody who's going to come in and provide that service for us.
And just as we talk about data across the grade level for all children, that's how we measure the success of this, through the IEP and those goals. And there are assessments that measure that, so we're looking at progress regardless of what the goal is. We want to see the child make the progress, so, you know, that is part of the assessment.
And because as you noted, it's, it can be so unique within the syndrome or the disability, it's very specific to that child and what they need and what their goals are or their, um, learning curve that we're measuring.
That looks great. Okay, um, the chair will entertain a motion to, um, the addition of the greenhouse program as presented by Special Education Director Donna Straight and Principal Margaret Marr. Second. Any questions?
The only question that, that I just wanted to, so what we're approving is that the program is going to go ahead and be developed and will we see it again?
No, you're, you're basically voting to approve the begin, to, to basically say you're gonna approve the, the start of this program. So they can move forward with actually implementing it, notifying people about it. Cause now, this is the time of year where team meetings are starting to come up.
Yeah.
So some of the children who might be qualifying for this program, we would want to be able to talk to their parents about it so they could feel comfortable with, you know, and, and, and start to really flesh it out to the point where, you know, parents can feel confident that we have a program. Not just an idea for a program. So we really need your approval to say, yes, let's go forward.
We're ready to go forward. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Forward to seeing it grow.
Thank you. Excellent, very important.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay Julie. Julie's things can be kind of quick, I think, it's-
Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
Well, I'm here tonight in your packets, you have, um, two of my latest little projects. One is the summer professional development, it's part one of a two-part series. And I'm sure the next time I come, we'll be talking about next year's professional development, um, the, the year-long program. So the one that I have here in your packet, it looks much better in color, I have to say. I don't know if you received that in your email. But just to give you some highlights, um, I worked with Dr. Straight to organize some supportive measures for teachers, um, to think about over the summer for accommodations for students with special needs. Working with the ELA vertical team to align, uh, curriculum as we have been doing on for the, the last year, but also to integrate, um, some of the new things that we're learning in terms of what's coming down the road and in the future for assessments, uh, for our writing rubrics, things that you heard about in the school improvement plans, continuing along that line of work. We wanted to give teachers some opportunities to play with technology and get a better sense of some of the things that they can do in their classrooms. And we had sent our teachers out to do some training on their own for technology and they wanted to be able to come back and offer that to the teaching staff. And so, this is the beginning of that process.
Part of that culture.
Yes, exactly.
Excellent.
Um, as part of our mentoring program, we're building a course for, um, instruction and, you know, supportive instruction along, along the course of, um, I'll say supporting again, supporting new teachers. Um, we wanted to start that phase with our Instruction for All. And that's a, uh, a professional development offering that will be offered by Heidi Manjo, who's also our mentor coordinator. So our new teachers will have that.
And Heidi teaches at the college level.
Yes.
A course similar to this. And this ties into the evaluation process, it ties into our DI, it ties into, you know, those core district initiatives that we're putting in place.
Right. And Donna and I will do, uh, training on assessments. We've been to a few trainings, quite a few trainings ourselves over the course of the year to learn about, uh, formative assessment, summative assessment, um, you name it, assessment. Uh, but also the new PRC assessment, which will eventually take the place of the MCAS test that we, um, are very used to. And so we wanted to be able to shed some light on that. And, um, continuing to support teachers, when we ask teachers, what is it, what do you feel like you need, um, support in for professional development? Um, oftentimes we'll hear things like, well, can you help me when I have a student with a, a specific need? Whether it's a language-based instruction need or a social emotional need. And so we wanted to, again, build those types of opportunities into this program, but also the year-long program that we're pulling together now, um, or finalizing now, I should say. And so then you'll see that with our Applied Behavioral Analysis Course and the Managing and Supporting Students' Behavioral Needs. Because each child is different and, and helping to support all learners is, is definitely a huge goal of ours. And so we're trying to find places where we can help support teachers with those concerns.
And one of the things you'll hear when you hear, um, the report from the gentleman we had come in and do the external evaluation is that the teachers, um, have a, a high degree of interest and, um, very positive about, again-
Yes, very positive.
Educating all students, but they have questions about what, what is the best way to work with kids that have social emotional disabilities when they're in my classroom? You know, what are the, what are the best ways to support those language-based learners? So, that, they're asking for that. And so, it's nice to be able to have people in-house who have those skills and, and talents and knowledge that can share with their colleagues. And so that's part of why we're doing that, is it's in real, direct relationship to the data we received as well.
Um, or else, I'm also doing, um, hopefully a course next year in the district on contentary literacy. I wanted to be able to start that off or start a precursor to that. And so I'll, I'll do a workshop on that this summer. Um, all the administrators are, are opening their doors to help teachers write SMART goals. We've been working, um, on training all our teachers on, you know, what's the, what are the specifics around SMART goals, which is part of the new teacher evaluation training. And so we're going to have a workshop and we're asking teachers to just come in with their questions and ideas and, um, to really, um, get a sense of what teachers need on a one-on-one basis. And so all the administrators will be there to help out on that day and get a sense of, of the questions that teachers are asking themselves. What should I do when it comes to defining a professional practice goal and a student learning goal? What are those two things specifically? And what language can I use to really, to really make sure that I'm targeting those things next year? We have creative bookmaking, Norcan does a fabulous job with that. Um, and that's, and that's something that you might think is, is, is just fun, but what it is, it's a new way or a different way to help kids organize information, summarize information. Um, but we, we all know that, that children love tactile things and it helps to not only read and highlight and take notes, but also to do things physically to help retain some of that knowledge. And so this bookmaking course is actually really important in that sense because it gives teachers other options to maybe traditional methods that they have used in the past.
Can, can we attend?
You can, it's fun, it's great, it's really a fun class.
We're in charge, Rob, you come on.
I could use it.
We have some Atlas Curricular Alignment webinars that are constantly running through our, um, Atlas Curricular Alignment Program and those are free to teachers. Um, obviously you can't click on the link here, but the link is, is embedded within the email that I sent out earlier. And, uh, we're calling teachers to invite them to join our two new vertical teams, which will start up- And uh, we're calling teachers to invite them to join our two new vertical teams, which will start up next year. We have the ELA vertical team running this year. That will run again next year. But also we're looking to expand that into a math vertical team and a science vertical team. So we'll have three vertical teams running next year, which is fantastic. We're very excited.
That'll facilitate communication between the grades and
All grade levels horizontally, vertically, all coursework, all assessments.
Teach into each other, yes.
Yes. And um, and there are a lot of changes, as you know, with our new frameworks. We have new frameworks this year for ELA and math at the same time, running concurrently. And then next year will be, the state is expected to sign on to new science frameworks. And so we want to be ahead of that and, and get that ball rolling. So we're ready when that happens. So you name it, it's happening in the world of education.
And are a lot of the science frameworks changing at the high school level?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how is the attendance with these?
Great. Well, yeah, I have fifteen people in the ELA vertical team right now. And it's been wonderful and great.
Yeah, across the levels.
Across all grade levels, yeah. And it's all volunteer. You have to know that. That's the other thing.
I think it just speaks so loudly to the working conditions with the, the teachers. That they feel safe enough to ask the questions, to reveal what they don't know and what they want help with. And that they feel supportive enough to join together with their colleagues and to come together. It's just a wonderful, a wonderful thing to know exists in the schools. Cause I, I don't take it for granted.
And you know, if you've been in other school systems, you realize it doesn't happen everywhere.
Yeah.
And so I feel blessed too in that sense where there are always people that are willing and very interested.
Really committed professionals. Just a very good climate to work in.
That's great.
It goes to the top of the ship.
We all work there. We all work together. Um, okay, so then Julie, do you want to just buzz through the?
So quickly, um, yes, we have made some changes through this vertical team and, and the work that, that I've done with Brian um in the middle school. And taking a look at how are we organizing the reading that we're asking kids to do? So there's been such a huge explosion in young adult literature. And we wanted to be able to offer that to kids, but also to help parents and guide parents in the sense of, which should my kids be reading? Can you help me find some authors and some titles or some genres um to get my kids interested and, and kind of pull that back um through the summer? Say that again?
It's a great list. I can't wait to start reading everything on it.
It is a great list. And every, I went to Barnes and Noble Tuesday with my own children for their summer reading. They do a thing at Barnes and Noble. And I found four more books I wish I could have added. So it's, the list is always growing. And if you have additions to that, feel free to send them along. But I wanted to let you know that after um school committee accepts this, if that's your prerogative, um, the English department head will be sending out a letter to parents to explain the different concepts that are embedded within this new um summer reading program at the middle school. And to also give some insight to parents on what is a character trait? Um, how do I help my children figure that out while they're reading? And also um to give some links to parents for um various places where they can find free audiobooks. Because we know some children, uh, reading is a struggle and we don't want children to feel like that's what this is going to be. So we want to give some options to parents in terms of how can I find support with this as well? So that will be coming um probably in the next week. And so if you look through, you'll just see um, you know, a sheet that certainly children um can log. And, you know, hopefully we'll see more than two. Uh, but I realize it is a short summer and I'm a realist when I need to be. Uh, but you'll also see that there are three that are recommended books per grade level. And then the list below incorporates all the different genres that, that we're expected to teach our children throughout the course of their middle school careers. So giving you some insight in terms of, here are some of the things they'll be reading um is one of the goals that we had as well.
And one of the things they'll just do as a, as a follow-up to it is a literary essay. You know, a liter, a literary, you know, just, just as opposed to them, in the past it was like you have to take a test.
That's right.
You know, so it's like Yeah, we wanted to move away from that because
It really isn't about that. It's about
It's about understanding and drawing from literature.
Right, Ryan.
Exactly. And if you look at the new frameworks, there's so much depth in terms of asking kids, you know, how are you finding the change in characterization? Or how are you finding, you know, the changes in terms of mood and setting? And how does that impact the reading and your interpretation of it? And so all of these things matter. You can't, it's hard to gauge that in just a test. So we want our kids to be able to write and explain and analyze and pull cer, uh, pull certain things from the text that are valuable.
If you saw the way the elementary kids are capable of doing it, we know middle school kids are capable.
Absolutely. That's right. So.
I was happy with, I, I liked the change versus the, you know, the kids are like, oh, I'm going to middle school and I have a test already.
Hey, we don't want that. I mean, especially for an incoming sixth grader. It's, it's certainly something I could see without would be daunting.
Yeah, reading should still be about loving.
Right, right. And I'm so excited for The Outsiders. That was one of my favorite books growing up.
Oh, good. Thank you. It's a great story and it's timeless, you know.
Take a look at the list too, Ryan, in case you have suggestions that you might think we should have included.
Anyone have a question?
So do we want, do we want to have a vote, just a vote due that the school committee wants, will adopt the middle school list? I'm not sure it's all that required, but it is a, it's curriculum. So I guess it wouldn't hurt, you know, for you to entertain a motion to adopt the recommended middle school reading list. This is a formal process.
Okay. Good question.
I guess the only question that comes up for me is, is some of the books I don't know. And so then it's just, you know, trusting, which is fine, but it, it's, it seems odd to approve something that I don't know.
Oh, the books?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't think we're
I don't think any of us have read them all.
Very impressed if you did though.
Maybe it would help if you talked a little bit about just quickly where it came from.
Uh, we use the school library journal as a guide. Um, and, and they recommend books constantly. We use um in addition to that, the Horn Book Awards. Uh, we use the um, the Scholastic Achievement Awards list. There are so many book lists out there. But what we try to do is find current literature, but also timeless literature, so that you have a sense of both. I mean, you all know the classics. You'll see the classics there. And that's, that's a given in terms of, I'm sure you're familiar with many of those. But the, the young adult literature's books tend to change, but they're all books that have been recommended by librarians as books that would be um applicable and appropriate.
And the themes are appropriate, and the themes are appropriate for, for these kids. Cause you know, there are some books you can read.
There are some books you'd love to put on the list, but you, it would just
Right.
It's not without education in terms of
But there are also some books that kids can read the words, but the themes are just too sophisticated.
I've always wanted to.
Really good readers can read like, things like uh Indian in the Cupboard. But, but if you, if you really understand Indian in the Cupboard, you, there, you, there's some his, if you have some historical background knowledge and all of that, it, it, it means a lot more to you, right? So it's not just about being able to read the words. It's really about being able to really, you know, immerse yourself with the theme, understand the concept, right? So do you want to take a vote?
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the changes to the summer reading process and book lists for the middle school as presented. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions about the superintendent's information that was provided in the packet?
I was just gonna, Brian, if you had any questions about Girls Inc., but we can save those for the next time. This Girls Inc., I know Brian had put that in there about a program that they were gonna do, the middle school.
Okay, financial report?
We'll get a lot next week, next, next meeting.
I'm nervous.
No, but there'll be, there'll be transfers and then hopefully projected closeouts and everything. We don't, we will not close out. Um, our last warrant for FY thirteen will be July fifteenth, I think she said. She sent you an email regarding signature.
She did send me an email. And I did tell her that I would certainly be here. And I will just um see who else on the committee will be there to make sure she doesn't get caught in not getting a signature.
Because you won't have a meeting till the end of the month.
Right, right.
The town gave us the deadline, so.
Okay, July fifteenth. I'll send down an email tonight. Uh, okay, we want to go into subcommittee reports? Uh, budget, I know, I don't think we do budget and finance.
Me, uh, uh, we haven't met yet.
Nope.
So um, it's a new title there and that's about it.
Okay, governance?
We did meet. I'm looking for the minutes.
I was very impressed with the minutes and saw when you started and when you ended. I was like, wow, they really accomplished a lot.
Thank you. Let's see. So Carol presented, um, well, I don't know the format here. Am I supposed to go through this in detail?
Uh, no, you could just give us the highlights, cause they, they read it.
Okay, so I guess the highlights are that Carol presented, um, you know, a recent situation at the high school that got um the committee thinking about vendors and core reforms and, you know, should we look at the whole process? And um, we had a number of action items coming out of that. Uh, one, looking at vendor agreements. Naomi was gonna look at possibly giving us some updated wording um for our contract. And then we're gonna look at our policy and social networking. So a little bit more work to do. I think we're gonna meet in about another thirty days and sort of wrap this stuff up. And then we talked about the policy review schedule. And I know that that whole book has been revamped over the past two to three years. So I think Laura is gonna help us. Uh, she has a grid with all the policies. And I think when they originated and when they need to be reviewed, that we're gonna use as our guide to make sure that we're doing it, you know, sort of religiously.
Right.
Whether it's a two-year cycle or a three-year cycle. And um, the last topic that we really just touched on was school committee goals. We decided to talk a little bit about subcommittee goals, one being making sure that we're reviewing the policies. Once again, on that two to three-year cycle, but thought that we'd talk about goals in general at the offsite. That's to be scheduled.
With Mike.
Yeah.
Right. And I think that was it. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, negotiating, um, Laurie and I did meet with Carol to go over her contract. And we are um hoping to meet um again soon. We do have to, probably within the next week.
Yeah.
Because we did want to um talk about it at the next meeting.
That's right.
Um, public relations?
We haven't met since the last meeting.
And safety, I know it got moved.
We did have it today.
Yeah.
I was not able to.
No, it was the chief's last change, last meeting. Uh, although the new chief
Attendant?
Came. Uh, and Detective Rodden. So Don, uh, Don Cudmore um announced that next year, he and uh Detective Rodden will be the liaisons to the school safety committee. They'll be coming to all the meetings. Um, he did say he's applied for a grant. Apparently there was some grant funds from the original um, the original body that approved money and funds for school resource officers. We enjoyed that grant for three years. The police budget funded it the following year. We funded, you know, it the following year. And then now we kind of did the liaison officer. So um, I call him Chief Cudmore, I guess. Chief Cudmore.
Not Donnie Chief.
He's just Donnie to me. But Chief Cudmore um, uh, has applied for these grant funds that are available supposedly for those districts that had school resource officers and weren't able to necessarily keep up with the funding of them. So we're gonna find out in September whether or not we have the opportunity to have an officer in the schools full-time like we did when we had Jimmy Rodden originally. So um, you know, we, we talked about that. We, we have developed a couple of action items for next year. One being to really go through and make sure our protocols and our safety, and our safety crisis manual are, you know, don't need to be adjusted and changed. And some alliances, alignment that we really could do that we now, after we've used it a couple of years, we can see some places where that could happen. And then um particularly looking at, there's a service that, in, in an organization uh, that, that does um site plans, like floor plans and all of those kind of things for not very much money. Like under three hundred dollars. They come and they do updated plans, which we feel we could integrate really nicely in with our, with our plans. So we talked about those kind of things. So, you know, we're excited, but you know, we, we wanted to really thank Chief Mulligan. Because you know, it's not always the case that the chief of police makes time every month to come and um sit, you know, in a room with, you know, educators and uh really, you know, talk about safety in, in town. And the kind of connections that we've had. And we have a great partnership. He said, you know, it's one of the greatest things that he's seen here. And, and he said he hasn't, talking to his colleagues, hasn't seen it in other places. So he feels, you know, very grateful to have had that opportunity. And, you know, we, we certainly feel very grateful to have had his participation in the process.
Yeah, I, I do recall that when I first was on the committee last year and sitting there and seeing him attend. I, I was rather shocked that he would do that. It just seemed to me that he has so many, you know, things going on. And, and he was always so great about the schools. I think he really has a, a high
He's very excited about the security that we've put in place.
Good.
Feels really good about that. And um, you know, we, we've done at least two, two or three community meetings when situations have come up. And, you know, he's been a great colleague and partner to stand right there. And, you know, everybody does it together. So uh, you know, best wishes to him and his retirement. And uh, you know, he'll be missed, but I, I know that uh, Don Cudmore will be
It's in good hands.
He's in, it's in very good hands. He'll, he'll do a great job. It'll be a seamless transition for sure.
Great. Um, school building committee?
I was looking back in my calendar to see when we last met. We have, the next meeting for the building committee is uh next Tuesday. And that's at seven o'clock. And that's here. Um, we haven't met for a little while prior to that. And I, I think um that I, I'm not gonna be able to recall dates right now, but maybe you can help me with some of the dates, Carol. But we're getting towards the end of construction documents where um, we're getting to the end of wrapping those up. So that those drawings then will go out to contractors. The list of potential contractors is being put together as we speak. And then um selecting a contractor. And what my recollection is, is that they're hoping to start construction in November.
That's correct.
So that's the basic schedule. And that's how close.
So everything's like, what we're going through right now is what we think, where we should be at right now in the process. Yes.
Basically, yes.
According to the timeline they developed, yeah.
Yeah, according to the timeline, yes. There are still some fundamental um questions that uh need to be answered. And um, they're, they're what you call bumps in the road. Um, it's not unusual in the process. And, and they may or may not come up later, but uh, all things considered, it's, it's moving along probably, I think you could say fairly the way it's supposed to.
That's great. I mean, it's such a large project.
Huge project.
It's a very big project.
To have things that come up that you can't necessarily get answered right away.
I will say what's interesting, and we, we do, we should get the, the latest plans for the committee that are up. You know, just when they, when they look at the, when you look at things like, um, you know, the colors and, and the patterns on the floor and the kind of materials that are gonna be used at the school and the, the facade outside and how it's all gonna come together. And it, there's been a lot of changes to the really basic plan that I think you would have seen. It probably would be worth, you know, having them come back.
We talked about, was Ellie, I, I think she was prepared to provide us like before and after, like original, what they were originally gonna do. And then now what it is.
Yeah, well, we'll, I'll, I'll put that on my to-do list to ask um at the meeting on Tuesday to just see, you know, what they feel they could, they could do. You know, I don't know if we do it on the twenty-seventh or we do it in July, but you know, we'll, we can see, we can see. But I think you'd be interested to see the changes, don't you think, Rob?
Oh, yeah.
You know, just even the way the outside can look.
From where it's been to, to now.
Yeah.
The other way to do it is to not look at anything and wait until it's built.
I've heard people say that. They're like, I don't even want to look at it.
But the, the evolution of it has been, it's, it's actually nice. I think you get more excited when you start to see like how it could really look.
You do.
Yeah.
I'm getting excited when I see the trucks going down the street.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, could I just report on the CPAC meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure, no, I just, I wanted to share this.
You had your most recent.
Yes, the, the CPAC, the Special Education Parents Advisory Council of Georgetown had their last and final meeting on June fourth and Carol was, was there and that it was the Shining Star Awards. And it's a really wonderful opportunity for the, the parents of Georgetown to show their appreciation for the, the dedication and uh, commitment of, of the special education, of all the professional teachers and, in Georgetown. And uh, apparently quite a few parents wrote in to Shelby Walker who pulled all this together um, and, and, you know, told about how much they, they really appreciated the, you know, the, all the help their children had, had been, had received and how inspiring and, and how, you know, these teachers reached out and really connected with their, their children. Um, so I'd just like to let you know who, uh, which, who was nominated, because there were quite a few nominations. Uh, because we have quite a few very committed and dedicated teachers here. Um, at the Pearlie School, we had Carissa Bonner. At the Penbrook School, we had Brooke O'Neil, uh, Kim Leonard, Michelle Finnegan. I think that's it. At the middle school, we had Amy Sanderson, Barbara Kowalski, uh, Jan Downing. And at the high school, we had Lisa Moscara and Tara Early. And uh, special recognition was also given to Dr. Donna Straight for her, her, you know, commitment and contribution and all the wonderful, all the great work she's been doing here, pulling programs and, and everything together over this year. And it was really very, it was wonderful, we, they got these beautiful, beautiful little flowers. They were tiny, tiny roses, it's hard to describe, they, they were very, very special little arrangements, but, so that, that was the Shining Star Award.
They all got?
They all got that, yes.
Yes.
So it was very nice, it was very nice. I think the teachers, you know, felt, felt honored and uh, you know, they, they talked a little bit about why they joined the teaching profession and, and, you know, what motivated them and, and what means a lot to them in, in their work and with children and um, it was great.
Oh, that's nice.
Good evening.
Very nice. My celebration.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Sure.
Uh, okay, old business.
So uh, CIP, capital improvement, I put a press, a copy of the press release that we put out. Um, we have been very fortunate to have a gentleman named Ray McManus who's been, uh, he was a local citizen who has been serving in this capacity uh, for a couple of years. His term ends uh, in June and um, so we, we're suggesting and we've, we've been in contact with Mr. McManus also, thanking him obviously for his ongoing service. Uh, it's been a little bit more challenging the last couple of years for him because he goes to Florida for a good chunk of the winter and much of the CIP work really hits at budget season. Um, so it, and they have trouble every year getting a quorum, as you noticed this year that happened. So our suggestion is that we, we see if, if there are, are other folks in town, someone who, who would wanna step forward that feels that they could make that commitment, particularly in the, in the winter months. And obviously we would, you know, with great gratitude, thank Mr. McManus for his service. So this is really um, more for your information.
Thank you.
But you will have to make the appointment.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're gonna, we're putting it out there, getting information. Um, you know, you're, if there's a, a couple of people who want, you, we'd probably need somebody that would be willing to sit and meet with them and perhaps interview them a little bit to kinda get a sense and, cause it will have to be just one person. It, people have not been beating down the doors in the past.
I was gonna say, yeah.
But um, in all cases, I have met with the people who've been interested. Um, cause that's, the committee had preferred that I do that and obviously Joan and Mike Anderson would also be people. It wouldn't need to be me, but I, I would trust the two of them to sit with the candidates and make a recommendation. But, you know, certainly the committee could have involvement, greater involvement if you so wish to do so.
How many candidates do we have now?
We don't have any.
None.
We're putting it uh, in for, this is a press rela-, it's in the paper, so we'll see where that goes.
All right. Well, yes, thank you to Mr. McManus for taking the time to do that and I can understand why he would wanna be in Florida.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, and it's freezing in here in June.
Me too.
Starting to have icicles hanging.
Getting chilly now that all the people went.
Cold in here.
The school calendar discussion we already took care of.
Table that or pu- or pass over it?
Yes.
Okay.
And the um, the workshop we would like to discuss that we have planned for July ninth.
Right.
What time?
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about. Yeah.
I have a building committee meeting that night.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're gonna wanna be into the evening, you know.
Yeah, this is gonna be during the day, right? Does that work for you, for your schedule to be during the day?
Um, yeah, I mean, I can make it work, it's far enough away that I'll, I can make that work, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanna start, like, I know, by the time you get your kids to school and all that, Danny, I don't know if you wanna start at nine o'clock?
Well, it's July ninth.
Oh, that's right, you're not taking your kids to school. Camp, I'm still not like believing the school's gonna be ending in eight days.
Onto Camp Leslie before?
No.
I didn't put in my calendar what time it starts, so that's the only thing. She's going to Camp Leslie that week, I, I don't know why, I just put Camp Leslie all week.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you wanna do something like nine to two or something like that, then you're, you know.
Is that how long to plan on?
Well, that's what we're discussing, you know, um, Mike will do whatever we want him to do. Um, you know, I think if, if, we may have to just focus on one of the things with him, you know, if you wanna do the superintendent's evaluation. It depends on how much work we wanna do in advance of it, cause we could certainly do some research on it. You, you did get some paperwork on it that he gave.
Yes.
When you got together.
Built, maybe we build a agenda and then think about how much time.
Right, that's what we're talking about, what do we wanna accomplish?
Yeah.
We had talked about doing sort of, you know, I know they do some things with um, you know, school committee goals. I know he's capable of running that.
We didn't have goals last year, so when we did our self-evaluation, we didn't have anything to evaluate ourselves against.
Just those criteria.
Yeah, so I think having goals for the school committee for the year is probably worth devoting some time.
Yes.
At this meeting too. On goals for the subcommittees.
Something like, if you didn't, like, it, if you can do eight-thirty, that's probably the best. But if it was like eight-thirty to eleven-thirty and then you had a, you know, a working lunch or, or you can break for lunch and then just do something, even if you could stay till three.
Yeah.
You know, and then you, we could break it into two parts.
You could do two major topics, I think.
I think that sounds like a good plan.
What do you think, and Rob?
I, I'm just thinking um, uh, one, having it all in one day versus, is it, is it really difficult to have, you know, a smaller chunk one day and another ch- small chunk another day?
Wouldn't be for me, but it might be, that, that's what I thought the committee had said that's, we, we, cause originally we talked about, I asked for two days. Remember, I said you should take two days and I think people said, well, we'd, they'd rather do one day. Did, did I hear that right?
And I, I, I think I was prob-
People who were working.
That was the meeting that you, that you.
That I wasn't here?
No, you were here, but you just had to leave right before that we discussed it.
That's why.
And I would be, I, I guess I'm okay with one meeting, but then for me, it's about not trying to fit everything into it.
Well, that's why I think if you, if you looked at the school committee goals and one of your goals is obviously gonna be to inter- to evaluate me with the new process, right? So I think those two things could connect.
I would love school committee goals.
Well, then maybe we say that in the morning and see how that goes.
At the end of that day, we might have a sense of, maybe we should schedule another day. Or we might have a sense of, that's great, we accomplished what we set out to do and, and it's been a, you know, a worthwhile endeavor.
And where is this, when you say it's gonna be at the MEC building, what is that?
Well, if you're, if you're interested in that space, um, if you were to follow ninety-seven through Topsfield, you get to that intersection there, but where, where the Newburyport Highway enters.
Route one.
Route one and you could turn, if you turn down toward the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Right, right there, um, as you turn, right on your right-hand side, there's like a building that sits on the side and it's called the, it's called the, it's a collaborative.
Okay.
But it's right there.
All right.
Really, you could go right by it pretty easily. And it's a very nice conference space. They have a kitchen area there, they have beautiful tables, meeting rooms, tech, they give you news technology there, it's just, it's a nice space.
Okay, so we just have to call them and.
No, we, we're taking care of all that if, if that's, if you're interested in doing it.
The address.
And then the question is, do we wanna do a brown bag, do we wanna um, you know. Call, or, or have somebody, have somebody, you know, bring lunch in, they do that all the time, you know, sandwiches.
Has some things right downtown there.
Yeah, we could take care of that.
Okay.
I guess I'm still, I guess I'm still of the vote of, of doing a session. Can, can we, can we do all of that up to lunch? Versus going into the afternoon?
Like what, at eleven-thirty to one? Well, what about the superintendent's?
Those two items do, I mean.
Yeah, I think you'd have trouble getting both of those in in the morning before lunch.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I do, because I think this process of the school committee goals, I think it, it's a, you know, it's more of an engage, you know, you're engaging in the process, not just, we're all gonna throw out goals and we're just gonna agree, I think it's a process.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so would we wanna go prepared with goals?
Okay.
It's late, it's late for you, we don't usually go this late, we, it's a big agenda. We would have a problem if Ryan goes.
No, of course.
Thank you, thank you for staying.
Thank you for letting me be here.
Oh, well, maybe you'll be here in the future, we'd love that.
We'll see.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
I, I don't, I don't know if it's that I, you know, I'm just getting older or what, but um, I think, you know, the, the superintendent's evaluation is enough for me to handle in, in a day. Or developing school goals and having a workshop on it, that's enough for me to handle during a day. Um, that's, that's just me.
So about one of those in the morning and one of those the afternoon?
No.
That's not what he's saying.
That's what he's saying, that's enough. So the issue was time, I think when we talked about it and you weren't here, the issue was really, could we find two dates where we could get together when all of us were in town and all of us were available? And that's, that's a challenge.
I believe, yeah, I'm sure.
So that's, you know, we're always making those compromises.
If I'm in the minority, I'll go for the day.
Can we bring you lots of caffeine? Should we make sure there's plenty of coffee?
You can do the spark. Coffee is a really good spark.
Or maybe you can work out some nature activity for us to do.
You know what, we'll do a guided meditation too.
Can we do an eight-thirty to two, I think three would be probably.
Eight-thirty to two, just put that here.
Eight-thirty to two? Isn't Dunkin' Donuts in the vicinity too?
Oh, that's not.
Does eight-thirty to two, is that okay?
Eight-thirty to two is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm going with what you guys do.
So when you say the goals, are we to go there prepared with things that we think the goals are and that's when we're gonna like all present them and then, well, I, let, let me ask Mike about that.
I would love to know what Mike says about.
Let me ask him like how they, how he's done it and what he would suggest, you know, we, we have. And I, I may suggest that he talk to you because, you know, maybe, you know, you might have a different sense about it than maybe I would. Cause it's really for us together, but I really more wanted to be a day for the school committee to feel like you get what you feel you need.
Well, I think with Mike, he's just, he's very good.
Yeah, very energetic and very engaging and being a school committee member for as long as he was, he kinda gets it all.
Yeah, so I could drop him a note.
Facilitate it then and create like a brainstorming session.
Yes, that's what he would do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he would do. But, you know, you might wanna, you might wanna be thinking ahead on your own, you know, what kinds of things, like as a school committee, you know, that you wanna have two or three goals, you know, as a committee, that you think are important. Like maybe, you know, increased communication with the public or, you know, what are those, you know, couple of things that you.
Looking at that essential um, school board book of yours that might get, give me some ideas.
Okay, so eight, I, I will communicate with him, we talked about eight-thirty to two, uh, school committee goals and su- superintendent evaluation process, just, you know, he can see about what, how much of that we can tie in. As opposed to two separate topics, maybe there's ways to link them, right? And then um, and then I'm gonna suggest that uh, if he gives us any thoughts on how he might structure that discussion.
And how much time he thinks it'll take.
Yeah, okay, and then I'm gonna suggest that he and Barbie have a conversation.
Right, great. Okay. Okay, now we have um, the first reading of new policy ACEA discrimination harassment.
Right, that's if anybody had any questions.
Somebody have any questions about that?
The way that's meeting, we would. Vote on that.
Right. Uh, music department donation, which, that was a great donation. Very, from the GEF, that was wonderful, I'm sure Mr. Messina was thrilled with that.
Very excited, yes.
Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the donation from the Georgetown Education Foundation to the district in support of the Georgetown Middle High School music program.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, community, oh, okay, the community service advisor stipend approval. Do you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I, I tried to explain it a little bit in your, in the notes to you. Um, uh, in, included in the teacher's contract are, is a whole list of stipended positions. And generally, when we do a new um, uh, new contract, we, if there's any that are gonna need to be added, we add them. Well, this particular one kinda got away from Joe. Um, this is a, this, this one started out, uh, when we did just freshman only for the community service requirement, six hundred dollars and then the agreement was that as we added a grade, that the responsibility for that was going to increase, so we would add it up to twenty-four hundred dollars. So he, here's why we're here. We, you know, so the teacher put in for the stipend and the payroll office said, we cannot pay you because I, we have no agreement, there's nothing in the contract about it. So Joe contacted me, we did up this letter, basically, and it just confirms. So the plan would be in the next teacher's contract.
It will be in there.
This would go in there.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really just cleaning up a little bit pa- bit of paperwork.
Did you have any issues?
No. No, I, I support this, this was, this is an agreement we made.
Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the side letter of agreement for the community service advisor in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars for the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen school year as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there is no need for executive session this evening. Um, so the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-four.
So moved.
With enthusiasm.
Okay, any questions? Did you get that in the minutes with enthusiasm?
Yes, of course.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.